All right, everybody.
That's not us. That's not us.
It's not us. So he said...
Oh, there we are. Okay.
Oh, wrong meeting. All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order, declare a quorum present. We are... We do have a fifth member who's just here, I mean, just appointed, but could not make the meeting tonight because he's on a long planned vacation. So I've got to announce that the planning board meetings are broadcast live and digitally recorded. Want to welcome everybody. Quite a crowd tonight. Please sign in, and on the sign-in, there's an indication that where you... if you wish to speak. But I think what we're gonna do here is because I suspect many of your people are here with respect to the Cattisto matters at Butters, we're gonna hold those comments till we take up that item. All right? If you do wish to speak, we are recording, and we want to pick up your name. If you can pick up your address, that would be good. So state your name and address, and try to address your comments to everybody on the board, no one in general, no one in particular. And we may not be able to respond to your concerns, but we're listening. And we... And if you don't want to stay for the entire meeting, what I want to do is not get derailed before we start. So I'll take those comments. We won't answer them. If there's time at the end of the meeting, we may take up discussion of them, one way or another, we'll get back to you. And if the comments go on for a long time, we'll cut them off, do our work, and have a second hearing at the end of the meeting. So everybody will get a chance to speak. Try to limit comments to... I try to listen... to limit the comments to the first five or 10 minutes. All right. So having said that, are there people here for non-Cattisto matters that wish to speak? I mean, except for our guests. I know we have some guests that are representing people. No? Okay. Then we're gonna go on and do some of our business first, and then we'll get to the Cattisto matter. The first business on the agenda after public comments is to approve minutes. So I'm hoping you all read the minutes.
I previously wrote, I'd like to make a motion if everybody else reviewed them prior to the meeting, to make a motion to accept all the minutes presented. Or do we have to make a motion for each one?
I think we should make a motion for each one because I have a correction on one of them. I don't know whether anybody else does, but make the motion for the first bill.
The worst one is May 1st. I make the motion to accept this presented.
Comments, questions? Everybody read them? Ready to approve?
I'd like to second the motion.
Yes. Comments, questions? Sorry, I jumped in ahead of the second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Bill, you want to go down the line?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for June 12th as presented. I didn't see any corrections on it, so I apologize.
I'd like to second that motion unless there's any changes.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meetings for June 22nd as presented.
I'd like to second the motion.
Comments, questions? All approval? All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for July 10th, 2019.
July 10th, this may seem trivial, but July 10th, you put in the introduction that Francois is here is his capacity as alternate, and I think by then he was an official member.
Yes, thank you.
Uh-oh.
I copied it forward. I apologize.
Anything else? Did you second that?
I did not, so I'd like to second the motion with the friendly amendment that the change be accepted, that the name Francois Steiger does not succeed afterwards with an associate member. And we strike that down. Is that okay?
That's fine with me.
You could also erase Tom Robinson as chair.
Correct.
Thank you. I apologize. I copied this forward.
I'd like to reamend this here to also include the removal of Thomas Robinson, open for an chair, closed for an. And if that is okay, I would second the motion.
That's fine.
Further additions, corrections? Hearing none. We'll move to set those minutes as amended, right?
Yes.
Okay. And you're gonna second that again?
I am seconding it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I make a motion to accept the minutes for July 30th, 2019, as presented.
July 29th.
July 29th.
July says 2030.
So I think we have a discrepancy here, so...
Okay.
When was it?
It was the 29th.
So in that case, I would like to propose that we amend this minute to reflect the fact that the date is actually July the 29th. And just to confirm, that would have been a...
I just looked. It's on a Monday night. It was on a Monday night.
It was a Monday night.
Okay, so it will be Monday, July the 29th.
Change my motion to accept the minutes as changed to July 29th.
Seconded on my side.
Any further comments, questions, questions? Hearing none, motions to approve? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thanks. This is a Herculean effort to catch us up.
Thank you for doing that.
By Christina.
Yes, thank you, Christina. Appreciate it.
Sorry, there were a couple issues.
Well, it's a fantastic amount of work to listen to the tapes and put these together. So we are now down to action items, and our first action item is we... I want to introduce to the board Roland Jean, who's the zoning commissioner. And as you all know, we now have combined services with Gardner. So we invited him to come, and we... You can see on the notes some questions to be asked. But talk to us first about the agreement with Gardner, how it's working out, and what you do for us.
So far, it's working out very well, I believe, from both standpoints. I think the town of Hubbardston is happy with what's going on. I know that it hasn't been much of a burden for us, so everyone's happy on our side.
Great.
We've brought in six, six people to replace what I believe to have been the four that you had before. So I think the service has to be better just on that level alone, and I think our level of professionalism is doing a good job for you.
Great. Great. Well, we had agreed on some questions that we wanted to ask him, I believe. So I'll ask you those, and then anybody else wants to add them, or you can pick them up for me. One is to discuss the zoning determination process and the board's role in that, if any. And I know you have a new form because I handed it out at our last meeting. But can you talk about how that's supposed to work?
The zoning determination process is if someone wants to ask if their lot is buildable, ask if they can put a business in a place where it doesn't necessarily belong or doesn't comply with their bylaws. This is a way for them to ask and a way for me to make a determination, which is, as zoning enforcement officer, that is my job to make that determination. You know, there's always a right to appeal. Sometimes the right to appeal goes to the zoning board of appeals. Sometimes the right to appeal comes to the planning board, and again, that's up to me to make that determination as well.
So if people approach us because we're kind of the face of the planning board, what would you... And I want to maintain our neutrality. I don't want to be individually making these judgment calls. So would the procedure be to say, would they contact you, or would they contact Patty Burke? Does the building inspector's office?
We would send them to Patty. We would send them to the Hubbardston Building Inspector's Office, and they would talk to Patty.
And they could pick up this form?
If it's applicable, yes. If it's not, Patty will direct them on what needs to happen. And you guys, as the appeals board for certain cases, it's probably neutrality is the best position to take because you could get yourself in a position where you don't want to be. Later on, if they do appeal my decision, you don't want to have had your opinions out in public. That's all.
So sometimes people come to us and say, can I do this? Other times, people come to us and say, hey, my neighbor's doing this, and I don't think it's allowed. So what is that process? Because we also shouldn't be opining on that.
I agree. I agree. I think, um...
What do they do?
They need to go to the building, to the building office and talk to Patty, and I think maybe we'll develop a complaint form. We have one in Gardner that we use, and maybe we should develop it, you know, institute it here as well for just that, for zoning complaints.
So again, we direct them to the building department and say, we need to maintain our neutrality.
That's where it goes. It's up to me to make those decisions, and then if they decide to appeal, which happens a lot, then it's up to you to make the final decision on what's gonna happen.
Okay, so if you develop that new form, make sure you get a copy to Christina so we can see it too.
Absolutely.
So we know what we're asking people to fill out. That's great. Okay, other questions from the board? Those are the two processes.
I think it sounds great.
Okay, I'm sorry.
One question I do have is I've been on the zoning board of appeals for many years, and many times in the past at the land inspectors, we would just get a letter denying whatever the individual was asking for. And we really didn't have the information we wanted, and we had a hard time trying to get somebody to explain that to us.
Sure.
Or come to the meeting. Would you folks come if we requested that?
If I was available, absolutely, yeah. Are you on the zoning board now?
Yes.
And the planning board?
Mm-hmm. The ethics commission said it was okay.
Then I'm good.
I've already been in that boat.
You have many jobs and feel willing to serve.
I understand. I understand that, yeah.
So if... Is it your custom if you decline something to cite why?
It would be in the denial letter, absolutely.
It would be in the denial letter. Okay.
The bylaw that was, that would, that was... I would justify my reason for denying it with the bylaw, absolutely.
They'd cite the bylaw and why it didn't meet the bylaw.
Absolutely.
And the more of an explanation.
And is there... I haven't seen the zoning, the zoning appeal application, but the zoning appeal application should take care of all the information that you need, and if it doesn't, I'll certainly update that.
Great.
I'll certainly make sure that that, because that's a pretty simple process.
Right.
Some cases are complicated, and obviously more information's needed, and sometimes things need to be continued. But for the most part, it should be a pretty simple process.
Right. Okay.
You indicated there's roughly about six individuals that are working?
In my department.
In your department. Are there, are they like assigned to regions, or are they across the different areas that you work with? Like, for example, I mean, can you give me an example in terms of how these individuals might be utilized for the work that as, as it pertains to the work that might happen here in Hubbardston?
Well, the electrical inspector does the electrical inspections and plumbing, and then we have... I have a local inspector, which is an assistant to the commissioner, and if he gets overwhelmed with the request for inspections, then I come, and we have two admins in the office to take care of all the paperwork.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah, certainly.
So all of them are available, not only for the Gardner office, but also for this office?
Absolutely.
Perfect.
Absolutely.
I have one other question, too, is one thing we're trying to, and we're having some success with, is get people to be really aware of our scenic way bylaw. So is that something that you get involved with ever, or you're aware of, and would tell people, hey, you can't cut that tree or move this wall till you... Where does... How do you interface with that bylaw?
Ninety percent of the time, that's been done before I get there, but... Maybe the scenic, maybe the scenic way bylaw should be available in the building office for when someone is pulling a permit that it would be applicable to if their, if their lot is on a scenic way, something that we could hand them in advance for informational purposes. But realistically, for me to walk up, I mean, I don't hand them the permits. We approve the permits, Patty hands them the permits. I generally don't talk to them until the job's well underway.
So those, those permits are submitted to Patty?
Absolutely.
So maybe with... And Patty's aware of that now, right?
Yeah, she actually has it posted on her wall, the list of scenic roads in Hubbardston, so that they can... It's actually on her desk.
And the application form?
Yes.
Okay, so we have that link. So that's great. Right.
That's it.
That does it for me. Anybody else? More questions?
Thank you for coming.
No, no problem.
Oh, wait, we have a question.
Just one question. Do we still have our own local electrical and plumbing inspector, or are we using guidance now?
You're using guidance now?
Okay, thank you.
The electrical inspector is the same guy.
Okay.
The plumbing inspector's different.
All right. Well, we thank you very much for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Oh, I'm gonna find my comments. I hope, here it is. Okay. So our next budget, or our next budget, our next agenda item, probably the big item for the evening, which is involves the Cattisto reclamation. And we could read what we, what was published, but we could also waive that reading, and maybe I can elaborate on a little bit for the people that are here, and then you guys will say, determine whether you want to waive it or not. So this matter comes before the planning board, an application of Ann Smith as trustee of the Cattisto family trust for approval of a reclamation plan for 9.66 acres of land located at 26 Worcester Road, Hubbardston, that had been formerly used to extract clay and maybe sand as well, sand and clay?
No.
Just clay.
Mostly clay, just clay.
Just clay.
Oh, just clay.
There was a petitioner. So the petition, the petition was filed under chapter 21, Earth Removal, the general bylaws of Hubbardston, which gives the planning board jurisdiction over earth removal operations, including land reclamation plans upon closure of the Earth Removal Enterprise. A board was notified of tonight's hearing, I know some of you are here because of that, by a certified mail, and notice of the hearing was published in the Gardner News. So the proposed reclamation plan involves applying Biomix manufactured topsoil, which is a product that's created using wastewater treatment residuals, in this case from Irving, Massachusetts, and mixing it with sand. Most of the sand, in this case, is already located on the Cattisto farm, where it was piled around the pit from which they removed the clay prior to its removal. The Biomix manufactured topsoil will be spread, it's according to the application, on the regraded land to a depths of four to six inches. So the Biomix, this is again from the application, will be created from this, the residual from the Irving, Mass, Irving, Mass wastewater treatment plant sludge. But I think it's important that you know that this sludge differs from standard wastewater treatment sludge because in this case, it's 98% short paper fiber that comes out of the paper mill that they had to install to clean up the river. And then they picked up a few abutting houses around it, which is that other 2%. So the company doing the reclamation is New England Wastewater Services of Maine Incorporated, doing businesses Casella Organics. And James Talby is here tonight from Casella Organics, as also is our planning board consultant from Places Associates, Mr. Bill Murray, that you're gonna hear from. It's important to note that the use of the Biomix as proposed for this site has already been approved by both Mass DEP and the Hubbardston Board of Health. So they've gone through that. Because the issue was not previously addressed because the bylaw's pretty new, we asked the planning, the planning board asked the applicant to submit proof that the Biomix didn't violate chapter 28 of the Hubbardston general bylaws, which was passed two years ago, I believe, which bans the importation into town of certain hazardous materials. To address this issue, the applicants hired SWCA Environmental, it's a firm out of Amherst, to give us an opinion on this issue. SWCA reviewed the sludge analysis data from the Irving wastewater treatment plant and concluded that it does not contain any hazardous waste material prohibited by our bylaw and is suitable for land application. So that issue was addressed. Now, the planning board, which is why it comes to us, we must also consider the impact of the project might have on at Butters, which I assume some of you are, such as traffic noise, congestion, runoff, odors. Somebody raised the issue of fire risk, so we do want to address those issues tonight. So tonight, the process I want to use is we want to hear first from Mr. Talby of Casella Organics on behalf of the Cattisto family, and then we'll hear from Mr. Murray, our consultant. And then we'll open the meeting to questions and comments from you all and the board members. Okay? So having said that, Mr. Talby, I know I saw you. There you are. Oh, I guess we do need to do that, right?
Yes, we do.
See, let me stop you for one second and make a motion to go into public hearing over this.
I'll make that motion.
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Because we closed our earlier public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jim Talby from Casella Organics. I live in West Brookfield, Mass, and I've been doing these land application projects for about 10 years. Ninety-nine percent of our projects are on state-controlled farmland to increase organic matter in the soil. And the material always comes from the Irving paper mill, where they recycle white office paper and make it into tissue paper. The Cattisto pit is a little bit different. That's a, not an agricultural site, so we would... The proposal is to blend the material with existing sand or topsoil that was pushed around the perimeter and put it six inches deep. Here is a map. If you can see it from the back, this inside green area here is the proposed work area. These slopes up here have already been stabilized, so it'll be mainly right here. There's no runoff off the property. The Cattisto's constructed runoff 15 years ago, maybe more. So the water, it's a bowl, and whatever water comes off, if there was excess, would go into the stormwater system. It's never overrun overflow, so there's really no water leaving the site. Our general operation is about four to five trucks a day. We would blend immediately within three or four days the material that comes in, make a stockpile of it, compost for a little bit, and then bulldoze it out to the desired depth. There'd be some landscaping. There's a few holes here, the three-to-one slopes. There's some really steep slopes in there now. Those would have to be changed with a bulldozer, so there'd be a little bit of work involved in that. Then we would seed it down to a conservation-approved mix of grass. Generally, on farmland, we would seed it down to a rye, a cover crop in the fall, and if it was gonna be a hayfield, we would do that, too, but this is just gonna be a permanent grass mixture. Right now, the whole area is pretty much unvegetated, and there's erosion taking place. And the paper fiber, once it's mixed with the existing soil, becomes a product that's completely erosion-proof. There's never any runoff. It, the DEP loves it for high-slope materials work because when you put it on a three-to-one and two-to-one slope, it stays there. Heavy rain, it will not move and wash away. So once it's placed, it stays. And then after, you know, it is a regulated material because of that 2% biosolids in the treatment plant that is treated, and after two years, it's considered natural topsoil.
You want to just address before we turn it over, sort of entry roads and main things around the property?
Yeah, the entry would be the existing road that Cattisto's built.
Which is off 68. That's...
Yeah, this is Route 68, and it's off this picture a little bit, but it comes right up through here. It's an asphalt road, so there's no erosion problems there. And this stockpile area would be adjacent to this stockpile of existing topsoil.
So would you be using the topsoil in the red to refill in the pit?
Yes.
Okay.
It would be, it would be a one-to-one mixture, and that would, you know, double the size, and that would be enough to cover that.
And do you think there is enough?
I hope so. We've done a few test plots, and it looked good. We thought it might have been just rocks under there, but we dug it three deep holes, and it was, it was a pretty nice-looking topsoil.
More than enough.
Hopefully, it's enough to do the whole thing.
Can you guys see the plan?
Yeah, I can see it.
I have extra copies for you guys on this.
Where is Elm Street or Berry Road?
Way to the left, through the trees, a half a mile.
See, there, it doesn't show on this one. No, okay.
Question? Can you talk about seasonal timing?
Yeah. This time of year, we're sort of in a rush to maintain a September seeding schedule. So if we start on this, I don't know if we have enough time to meet that schedule. Generally, seeding needs to be accomplished by September 15th in this part of Massachusetts. Otherwise, this is a real rate of failure. The material can be laid out. It's erosion-proof. It's not gonna wash away. We could easily stabilize it temporarily with a rye crop, which will sprout in the colder weather. And that, we do that quite a bit, and then come back with a four-wheeler and seed the rest of it in the springtime.
But you won't be hauling short paper fiber in the winter and dumping it, will you?
No, that road is, is not a winter road.
Right.
It's pretty dangerous. So it would be between, you know, now and October, we could, it would be done. Wouldn't take that long. If we run out of the time on the season for seeding, we would stabilize, put some cover crop on it, and sort of a rye, and it would sprout and be fine.
Winter, right, yeah.
And I to understand that you anticipate, therefore, at the rate of four trucks a day, you should be able to complete bringing and hauling whatever material you need to bring into the site by October, and there's nothing that is required beyond that, assuming, again, you have the weather and all these other conditions, but that's in the right, in the right scenarios, right?
Our timeline is this material, once it's on a site, has to be amended in 42 days. That's standard with all DEP paper fibers. So we would come in, mix, but once it's mixed, it's considered stabilized by the DEP. Then that'll give us time to landscape the site and then amend those areas. So it has to happen. When material starts coming in, we have to have it completed in 42 days.
Okay, so at a rate of four trucks a day, I'm assuming it's Monday through Friday?
Yes.
You should be able, at this point in time, to complete this project if things work out by sometime within the October timeframe, is what you plan?
Yes.
Okay.
And we always have an asterisk. If the mill has a breakdown, which they happen sometimes, production can stop or slow down greatly, but generally, it's, it's pretty consistent. Any other questions?
Can you address odors?
Yeah. The agricultural sites are a little bit trickier on odors because we're incorporating the material with farm equipment, and that tends to make more odors. This is going to be a dump blend with, one-to-one with topsoil. It does smell like wet paper towels, and in wet nasty weather, we had a hard time last year on the site in town. We were fighting some pretty miserable weather, and we just, vehicles were getting stuck. This is different. This is, you know, construction equipment, and we're gonna grab it, mix it, stockpile it. Once that composting begins, it really consumes any of that paper odor. And it's actually better if we can let it compost, after it's mixed, let it compost for a little while after the 42 days, and then we lay it out. It's cooler weather, like right now, muggy. It's kind of rough.
The odor problem essentially, I don't know.
Yeah, we tend to work in really secluded sites this time of year just because of weather conditions.
Can you describe a bit about the trucks that are going to be utilized for this? I'm assuming these are large trucks, 10, 10-ton plus?
They're 30-ton trailers.
Okay.
So they're, the company that hauls all the material is goulet trucking out of Deerfield. And this is a pretty easy haul for them because they're basically taking asphalt roads. We take them off-road and farm sites quite a bit, which can be difficult for a highway truck. They're, have sealed tailgates, so there's no spillage, and the covers are, there'll be no odors going through town. They're sealed. And right now, the paper mill is... So the paper mill takes recycled paper bundles, repulps it, makes new tissue, and then puts clean water back into the river. But that wasn't always the case. Before 1977, there was quite a bit of material going into the Millers River, and it was a pretty unsightly thing. So we're pretty proud, and they're pretty proud of the fact that they're, they're in the clean water business. And they're de-watering this material very effectively right now. So the loads, when they're, have a higher percentage of drying matter, smell a lot less. It's the moisture that causes the odor issues. So we're in a really good spot right now, just because of their efficiency on de-watering the material and putting the clean water back into the river.
Can you provide some additional information in terms of, as I understand, there's been other projects that you've done in town?
Yeah, we built a hayfield for Rick... Yeah, we built a hayfield for Rick Green last summer. That was in some pretty difficult operating conditions, but it came out pretty nice, he's pretty happy with it. So he expanded his hay operation by about ten acres. We did one.
Was it using the same material?
Exactly. And you did your landfill before my time in Harbertson with this material, so it saved the town a lot of money from purchasing topsoil. They blended it, I assume, with existing sand. Because it's erosion-proof, it's great for landfill slopes.
Okay.
Traditional topsoil would erode away in a heavy thunderstorm like we had today, where this material does not. And you can take just basic sand, mix it with the paper, and the decomposition of the paper, that's quite a bit of nutrient base, and I can pretty much grow anything on that. The farmers that we work with, year in and year out, have large farms in Western Mass, and they have very sandy soils. And we have projects where we go every spring and fall to the same farms, and we do a set number of acres. And we've pretty much improved their yields by forty to forty-five percent, growing cow corn and soybeans, and they're pretty happy with us. So we don't get to do gravel pits very often, because most of these gravel pits get built into housing developments, so this is kind of a rare thing for us. So we're kind of excited about doing it, and I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Do we, do you think, should we take questions from him, or should we let Phil speak first and then take questions?
Well, since we have the gentleman up, my suggestion would be, is if there's any pertinent questions to what has been presented.
Presented already, all right, so we'll open it up to you. Go ahead, I want you to listen to, to what Bill has to say too, but, are there questions?
I have a question.
Sure. Say your name and address, please.
My name's Araba Dak, I live on fifty-five Root Road. We just went through this with a farm down the street from us, and I'm not sure if it was your company or, I know that the trucks were definitely different, it was a different company. But it was very, very disrupting, the day, the trucks going by all the time. And they did spill out material on the road, and it stunk. It stunk, and I appreciate what you said about the agricultural, the application is different.
It was difficult.
And, but, the odor, it was so bad, you could not go outside and you couldn't have anything on the grill. You, you just, you can't have the window open. It reaches into your clothes, it's just, it's absolutely disgusting. And then my other big concern is the, like, I got the report, and there's lots of chemistry tests in here. And, I mean, I know that this stuff has been around for a while, but does anybody know what the long-term effect on just the, just the small organisms, and, I mean, can you guarantee that it's not going to, think Brigham Pond is right there? I mean, I mean, I guess I need some reassurance about exactly what that material is, because if you go on the, if you look at biosolids, and it comes up with a human waste, and I mean, I don't know how everybody else feels here, but I'm, I know that we are very, very concerned about it, because it was not a pleasant experience to go, and I don't know how long ago it finished.
A year.
It's been about a year. And I mean, and it does, I mean, every once in a while, you can still smell it, and, you know, maybe it's like you said, when it's wet. But I don't know what they used, I don't know what they applied up there.
That, that was, the weather.
Because I wasn't paying attention to this stuff at that point in time.
The weather made it very difficult for that project, granted. As far as the, the chemical analysis of this has, the, the testing you see showing that the paper fiber is trace amounts, similar to what's in everyone's front lawns, it's base, all the heavy metals are the same as what's existing naturally in the soil in Massachusetts. That's why I have a beneficial use determination to do this. The permits are written with a permit, it's really not applicable to what I do, but that's the one they make me use, because there isn't one specifically for paper fiber. But it shows on there with the math that we could do the project for thirty or forty years in a row. And that's the way the math is designed, to show that the levels would not be elevated until that level. So it's, in, as far as the biosolids, in fifty percent of the biosolids in the country are spread on farmland, it's pretty much an accepted practice. Not everybody's happy with it, but the DEP deems it safe, and a reasonable use of the, as a fertilizer.
They probably have done that with a lot of things, though, so.
Can you give us some idea of how far the odors are, and how far the odors carry, and?
And this lady here, whereabouts did you live where the project was, ma'am?
Fifty-five Root Road, it's up by Sawyer's.
You're right at the end of the, right where the field is, right?
How far was the, the application area from your house, would you say?
Quarter mile. Quarter mile, half a mile to the other end.
Across the street.
And it was pretty mu, I'm her dad, I often lived there, of course, and it was basically like your neighbor was pumping on a septic tank, but every day. And we don't have air conditioning in our house, we like to sleep with windows open, it was impossible to do. You couldn't have company over, you couldn't have a cookout, and it went on way too long. Other neighbors complained about it, but, oh, well. And that's as far as it ever developed. But the other question I had, that this is the same product that is dumped up to the Tiflton Developmental Center, you know where that one is? Templeton Math, up at the state?
I do some business with him, but.
All right, yeah, let me finish, let me finish. Anyway, they spontaneous combustion started to set on fire. Spontaneous combustion from stockpiling it. And when the fire department arrived, they said it's certainly not fertilizer, and we're afraid to touch it. They contacted the manufacturers of this product, which may be this fellow, I don't know. But anyway, it may be something altogether different, I'm not, you know, but anyway. They contacted the people with the mixed product, and they told the fire department, they started trying to put it up with water, and it only intensified the fire. It got worse by adding water to it, so the fire department shut down. Now you get statements from the fire chief, I'm sure he'd do that, just to show you it's not exaggerated. That they found out, maybe magnesium or some, whatever you would put water on a fire to make it burn more, they couldn't put the fire out, they told them, do not add water to it. They had to take the fire crackers and keep raking it out, raking it out, raking it out, until they smothered the fire out. And today, and that was a year ago, and today, they still have a stockpile up there, and every employee who works up there is sick of it, they can't, they can't ride by with your window down, and anyone here is welcome to ride through the Templeton Development Center any day when the wind's blowing in your face, and check it out for yourself, and tell me if you'd like to live across the street from that. Which may have nothing to do with the pit operation, I don't know, but I think it's time that we be a little more realistic and see what's really in this stuff. And how long is the good, and when the animals eat the hay, what, what does that do? Are they eating medications, are they eating things? I don't know. And why do we have to bring it into our little town? I don't understand that. Is there a money trail here where we get paid to town for dumping it, or the landowner? Or do they pay a fee to someone for filling in the hole? Does anyone know, or?
You can see that we've had a lot of time to kind of, you know, we think about it, we research it.
You just dump it for free when you go to someone's place, dump it? Well, I'm just saying.
The Templeton school takes in about five projects that aren't mine. And some of the ones you're speaking of, I know what you're talking about, those are fertilizers. Some of them are tofu residue, some of them come from New Hampshire, from a different vendor.
Have you heard him catching on fire and not being able to put out by water?
The fertilizer that you may be speaking about, compost, I've never seen it catch on fire. I've seen it smolder. And that's mainly because the farmer didn't spread it in the appropriate amount of time. If he left it out there for more than forty-two days, in last summer's weather, the fertilizer could compost, but that's not the paper fiber. That's a whole different thing.
You're talking just paper fiber from the mill. Did no human waste mixed in that from the source?
It's two percent of that. But that's not going to catch on fire, because it's seventy-five percent moisture. And it's going to be mixed.
We did solicit the opinion of our, from our fire chief, who asked about it, and I'm going to have Bill address that. But because it was, I mean, perhaps it was you that raised it, somebody raised it in a comment, so we thought, we're trying to answer everybody's questions. So we did look into that, but he'll talk about that too.
We'll give everybody else a turn now.
And, yes, we appreciate your comments, actually. Anybody else wants to speak? Yes, can you speak your name?
Mary Hayna Loma, nine Berry Road. I'm just curious about the long range of the project. I mean, basically, is, this was opened up to remove clay, as I understand it? Is all the clay removed and sewn out?
No, but there's no market for it.
Well, they refused to give us a permit fifteen years ago, so my mother shut it down. And the contractor we had working there couldn't work with the town, the town kept on saying, oh, I need more drawings, and they just says, well, we're not making that kind of money in order to have drawings every year and spend ten, fifteen thousand dollars a year for engineering for the town, which they didn't need. So, put us out of business.
So there is a possibility somebody sometime could open this up again?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Oh, it's possible.
But they would have to start over and reapply.
Right, and that's probably never going to happen in this town. I don't think anybody will ever apply for a special permit in this town again, for gravel. It's just, they don't get it.
And I guess the other part of my question would be, okay, so we, we put this mixture on top, and we, we grassed it in, with the assumption it will never be opened again as a pit for various reasons. Is it good for anything else? I mean, would this be developable, and would this?
It, it has plans for solar.
Oh, okay.
That's down the road.
Okay, okay.
And nobody will be seeing it either, because it's all secluded.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that sounds good, that sounds, that sounds good, yeah. And there's, the other, the last thing I guess is, there's no plan for cutting any vegetation on my side at all?
No, no, no.
Perfect, I'm satisfied.
Well, I forgot to say in my introduction that two members of the board, myself and Francois, met on the site. For some of you, maybe you've been there, I don't know. It is pretty secluded. It is definitely a pit, it is definitely barren. It isn't growing anything. If you want to restore the soil, you're going to have to.
Grows trees very well.
Well, all up on the edges, on the edges.
Ten thousand trees that do this job.
But in the pit itself, there wasn't much.
Yeah, and there's, there's trees in there too. They'll be gone.
I, I think it might be good to explain why this project is taking place. That it's, it's really the reclamation step that, that is, that is actually being done through this remediation, right?
Yes.
And so I think, Bill, you, you'll probably go into this here a little bit more, but just to preamble this here, is that it's important to note that part of this project really is, is to do the remediation step after having had this pit open. Now, basically, the pit is not in compliance, it's, it's, I mean, it's, it's, it's open, but it's, it's, there's nothing being extracted there. In order to be able to do anything with it in the future, a remediation has to take place, which is why I think, Bill, and we'll go into, into this here a bit more, and the gentleman here from Casaya is basically explaining how they intend, at this point in time, to do the remediation, okay?
Before we hear from Bill, I would like to ask, I would, I'm worried about the odor situation. So how do you minimize the odor situation, and they said they're actually, the trucks had spillage, were your trucks?
Was it a different company than what you had?
What we had in the road when they turned the corners, it was black little BBs. And you could just take it on the road, you could just go like that, and it would just blow away. Now, does that mean anything to you?
Yeah, that'd be the fertilizer.
Okay, well, that's what they spill out when they turn the corner.
So.
And it stinks days afterwards, and it doesn't even dissolve with the rain or anything.
He's a fertilizer customer, separate from his project, at Ray Sawyer's Farm on Brook Road.
Yeah, I'm not knocking Ray Sawyer's Farm.
So you say that the product smells like wet paper towels.
That's the paper fiber.
The, the paper fiber, and you're, you say it smells like septic.
It's a difference, from what he says, it's, this was a fertilizer.
This is the fertilizer, it's spread on the whole farm.
So I do want to understand, and how would you minimize the, the odor spreading? When you apply, how do you minimize odors?
In this case, it's going to be different than the Brook Road project, because we're going to be blending immediately with topsoil one-to-one. And that mitigates the odor issues.
So, so what's the, because I'm thinking about, we have to have a decision in parameters, how's, what's the longest time that the product would be stockpiled before it's interred with the?
Forty-two days, that's, that's in my permit.
Okay.
It would be less than that, because
Because you want to do the whole project.
We're going to have a small working phase here, we're going to have to mix it and stockpile it.
So just a quick question. So the board has the ability to regulate this and, and actually tell you what to do. We're probably not going to let you therefore do, allow an unmixed pile to sit for forty-two days. And I heard in your narrative when you started, that three to four trucks, and you will probably mix it within three to four days of arrival. Is that what I heard accurately?
Yeah, we like to have a day's worth of work for the guys to show up.
So, so what you're saying is twelve to sixteen truckloads get mixed within three to four days?
Correct.
And that's, that would mitigate the odor?
Yes.
Pretty quickly?
Yes.
And if you did the mixing in the bottom of the pit, would that control the odor even more?
Less.
Right, okay. Because the predominant winds in the fall are westerly, in the summer, they're southwesterly, and in the winter, we get the nor'easters, which would push it back towards Brigham Pond. Just, just trying to.
Yeah.
So what I'm trying to explain, hope I am, is this board has the ability to intercede at any point in time with the grant of the permit. If odor becomes a problem and they become aware of it, they can take action on their own part. First, of course, we'd notify them and say it's a problem, we'd ask them to rectify it. Secondly, they would have the authority on their own to order a change in the operation that if, if you have a day's worth of material, and it is being a problem, this board would have the authority to order the applicant to mix it every single day at the end of business day. We don't want to tell, they don't want to tell, I'm not speaking per se for them. We don't want to tell a businessman how to do his job if he's doing it well, and it's working. So that's, I just want to put things in perspective.
Do you have other questions for Mr. Talley, and we'll let, let you, he, we, of course, none of us are the engineers, so we have a consultant that also, I mean, we did, at least I read all of those materials, but as the saying goes, it's a little bit Greek to me. So we're going to have Mr. Murray talk about what we should be concerned about as planning board, and what we should not be concerned about at the same time. So we'll let him speak, and then we'll come back if you want to answer any of his questions too.
Okay, so my, my company is Places Associates, we're out of Littleton, I'm a Harbertson resident, have been for almost thirty years. I've been consulting, my firm has been consulting for, I don't know, ten or fifteen years, maybe ten years. We're planners, landscape architects, civil engineers, and surveyors, and we do consulting for other towns as well. We were asked to review this application, and this application is unique, because what the earth removal bylaw is principally for is big gravel operations. So it addresses hauling gravel, or earth, or topsoil, or whatever, out of the town for sale, or whatever. But it didn't matter, that bylaw has been in effect for a very, very long time. It's been modified more recently, but it always had a requirement for the restoration of the pit. And this is where the planning board's stepping back into the picture. This pit was originally permitted by the Board of Selectmen, twenty-five, in the eighties, right? In the eighties. And the Board of Selectmen did an okay job, and there is a bond still, correct me if I'm wrong, there's still a bond that the town is holding to make sure that this remediation happens. So to kind of give you all a big picture. The other big picture is, this is not the first time that short paper fiber has been used in the town of Harbertson to remediate a pit. There's the old turkey farm off of Route sixty-eight, and I have to tell you, that was one of the most miraculous changes I have ever seen in my thirty years of doing this. That's a pervious sand and gravel that goes to an endangered species habitat, and ultimately flows to the watershed of the city of Gardner. So it was a sensitive area, it had a lot of concerns. The state actually came into that project and issued enforcement orders, the U.S. EPA was involved in that project. It was looked at by many, many people, including the town, not my office. And it's an extremely successful project. The, the grass out there is three to four feet tall, the deer love it, it's a big, open meadow. And again, Rick Green is using the same methodology, he's a farmer in town, a member of the Conservation Commission, and a townie for a long time, and he's using that to supplement what was a woodfield, woodlot.
Forest.
Is, yeah, he had a microverse come through, and it destroyed the woodlot. So it is not an unknown project to the town of Harbertson. It's not an unknown product or project for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or this general area. So that is kind of my big picture in the background. We reviewed this project from three different perspectives. The first perspective is compliance to the regulations. And as I said, the regulations are really tailored towards earth removal. And the final part of the regulations is the restoration. So they have asked for waivers because So, they have asked for waivers because much of this doesn't apply. They're the only pit, by the way, other than the one that predates, since we've enacted the new bylaw. This is the only pit to come forward and offer a restoration plan, the only one, and we have more than a dozen in this town. So, just, again, to, to give perspective. So we reviewed this against the regulations, and they don't comply with many, many of the regulations, because they really aren't applicable. But we're paper pushers as well as engineers and everything else. So we reviewed this and, and identified that they need waiver requests, and they've made waiver requests to dot the i and cross the t. And in order for this to be considered a complete application, the planning board has to accept and therefore grant the waivers to the regulations because the regulations aren't custom fit to this, this application. One of the questions, or many times this question comes up, about the components of this, this material. It arrives as a saturated, somewhat saturated, dry paper product, what's the moisture content when it arrives?
The dry matter content is thirty-two percent.
But it, it is somewhat moist, is it not, in the truck?
Yes.
Okay. It arrives in, in sealed and covered trucks, they get dumped and then they get mixed. We specifically asked Casella Organics to have a licensed site professional address the leachability of the components, whether it will have an effect on surface water, whether it will have an effect in leaching to storm water. A licensed site professional is the person, they're the hazardous waste guys. So, and I personally know the licensed site professional that they hired, he's a man of great integrity and intelligence, and he came back and certified under his seal and his license, he's a PhD as well, that this material is, for all intents and purposes, benign, it doesn't leach, and if it does leach, the concentration of leachate is likely less than in the concentrations that exist in the ground in the gravel pit. Further, a gravel pit is a very fine, or not gravel, it's a clay pit. Clay is a very, very fine soil, and it's what hazardous waste guys use to actually capture contaminants, because they adhere to the soil particles and they don't leach. So, both the product and the soils that they're putting them on are actually pretty well compatible. Then we went and, we went back and we asked, you know, heavy metals components and all those kind of things. And they are at the barely detectable limits on virtually all the heavy metals. And I don't see anything in here that if it catches fire would continue to burn, which, which is something like magnesium. And the magnesium concentrates in this material are listed, and they were reviewed. So, we had heard a comment about this material catching fire, and it's a short paper fiber, so it'll burn, right?
No, it's, that's the fertilizer that we were speaking of.
No, no, but paper fiber, if it's dry and you put it on...
They've tried to incinerate it, but it's just, it doesn't seem to work.
Okay.
That's why I'm doing what I do.
Anyways, the, the fire chief was consulted, and he downloaded the MSDS on this, so that he knew what he was talking about. And the fire chief said that if this did catch on fire, other than in a truck, they would treat it as a normal grass fire. There is nothing in the components that he read, and the MSDS actually does list what you need to do in case there's a fire, and it lists what you need to do if there's human contact, whether you can breathe or not, and he is not concerned. His greatest concern would be a truck, trucking it through town and the truck catching on fire, and those, those were his words, not mine. So, having reviewed all of those things, what we do believe is that the planning board has the ability to issue up a permit and to safely do so. Brigham Pond, by the way, this site doesn't drain to Brigham Pond. So, and the groundwater doesn't go to Brigham Pond, the groundwater flows beyond Brigham Pond, so it won't reach the pond.
It goes down behind the highway to Fama, right?
Right, right.
No.
No?
Groundwater does.
It goes to Elm Street, Barry Road.
Oh.
No, actually, it does, there's a stream in between that goes down. The stream is the surface effect of the groundwater. So this wouldn't make it to Barry Road, Barry Road, by the way, is up in elevation. So, there are no downstream recipients, no immediate abutter that would be affected if runoff left the site. There's really nobody downstream that would be affected if there were a contaminant stream coming out of it. But, quite frankly, we've been certified by the people that are licensed to do it, as well as the DEP, that this is not a product of concern, and as Jim has told me multiple occasions, they won't let this go to a landfill, because it's highly organic matter and it has a beneficial use. So, in order for the planning board to grant a permit for this to happen, you would have to accept the waivers that they have requested in there, perhaps some others. And then we would suggest that stringent conditions and controls would be placed on the project, times of trucking, trucking material notifications, so that they're gonna be hauling this through the center of town on Route sixty-eight, and then hauling it up the hill into the pit, this isn't going on any of this, it's going on main roads. If there is a spill, that's gonna be a big deal, and our police department will be involved, and that would simply be a, a cleanup matter. But if there's a problem, there's gonna be a whole lot of people in town that would be concerned if these trucks were leaking, spilling, dripping, or doing anything like that. There'd be a lot of eyes on this project. That being said, the planning board has the ability to regulate this project pretty strictly and to make sure that it can be monitored. Also, in the regulations are the requirements that the applicant pay for inspections by my office or anybody else that they designate on a regular basis, and that's something that we do on virtually all the projects in town. We inspect them prior to an incredibly heavy rain, we inspect them immediately after a heavy rain, I'm a town resident, so I can do it in the morning, on the way home, whatever it is. So, those are the requirements that we think that the planning board should put in, and we'll have a lot of specific suggestions to the planning board if they ask us to help write up a permit. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Questions from... Maybe the Cateystows would like to say something, you're the petitioner, you're welcome to speak. Nope, okay, anybody else? Yes?
Ed Blanchard, twenty-three East Comet Pond Road, former owner of a gravel pit in, in town, down by Sawyer Pond. And, so I have some background in this, and, and because I owned that pit, part of my responsibility for finishing that pit was to make sure that the slopes were proper, and that we had enough topsoil to, to grow vegetation, so there wouldn't be runoff on that. And, what you said about gravel pits in Hubbardston, there are about eight or nine of them, I guess, and all of them are in all sorts of different condition. But it, this is, this is a great, it's a great thing to have someone come to the planning board with a reclamation project that will reduce high slopes and, and provide vegetation where, where it would be helpful and with a possible end use that would be, would be good too. But, you know, very, I think the previous planning boards had sent out requests to all of the, all of the pit owners in town to come forward, I think within a year's time, with a reclamation plan, and none of them to date have done so, including the town of Hubbardston, which owns a pit, and has, has, has never come forward with a reclamation plan either, but we won't go there.
Yes, we will.
It is, it is good to see a pit in possible restoration, and certainly there's issues that have to be addressed and looked at to make sure that it's appropriately put. From a former pit owner, it's, it's nice to see a pit being restored and the slopes being taken care of and vegetation grown. Thank you.
I think maybe it's time to, to close the, the public, yes?
I'm sorry, we did have a letter come in, I didn't know if you wanted that read.
Go ahead, read the letter to the...
Okay, one member of the public was not going to be here on the seventh, and send a letter.
Can you hear her? Yeah, okay.
"To the Town of Hubbardston Planning Board, unfortunately, I will not be able to attend the public hearing on August seventh." This is from Vincent Ritchie. "Therefore, please accept this letter as my testimony in support of the proposed earth removal pit reclamation plan, submitted for twenty-six Worcester Road by the Cateystow family. Upon review of the plans at the town clerk's office, it is my opinion that the proposal is viable and complies with the Hubbardston General Bylaw, Chapter twenty-one, Earth Removal. The Cateystow family has been working and cooperating with the Hubbardston Planning Board for several years to bring this pit into compliance. I would hope that not only would their plans be approved, but they would be recognized, along with the Hakela family, who were the first to apply for gravel removal permit by, after the bylaw was passed, as being proud and responsible landowners in our community. Further, I'd request the planning board hold this plan out as an example to the owners of the gravel pits off Peterville Road, the Fletcher Family Trust and the D.J. Palm Nominee Trust, and force them to com, to also comply with Chapter twenty-one and reclaim their pits that now exist as wastelands and a blight on our town. Respectfully submitted, Vincent Ritchie."
All right. I would like to close the public comment period and move on to deliberations. But I think in order adequately deliberate, we're gonna need to be able to ask you some questions as a board, and possibly you. So, any objection? Okay, we'll vote to call, close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, second?
Second motion?
All favor, aye.
Aye.
Just, just as a point of order, once you close the public hearing, the only information that you're supposed to take in
is anything that's been previously submitted or clarification of what was previously submitted.
No new information is supposed to be able to be delivered.
Correct. Thank you.
We have a wealth of information here, between the submitted documents and the maps and...
Unless you left something out.
Think of anything. All right. So I just want to go back to procedurally, our rules and regulations and bylaws. I believe we could basic, vote, basic approval or disapproval of the application, but it has to be subject to a written decision and whatever conditions we want in those decisions, and we must deal with the waivers requested. So, and we do have sixty days to, to issue a written decision, but my hope would be that we could get this done and maybe have a second meeting this month, just with a single topic.
Oh, if you get it done so they can move on with the project, yeah.
I know that's maybe, maybe pressing people to do it. I guess I can kick off the discussion by, by saying, I've looked at the waivers, which are addressed in his letters, which was addressed in the application, and many of them truly, truly do not apply to this situation. Hours of operation of their business, you know, they relate to taking earth out rather than putting earth back. So it's not that they're wa, they're asking us to do them a lot of favors, many of them are, are truly, truly inapplicable, and I think Mr. Murray came to that same, same conclusion. But, there were, waivers were not requested in areas that do, do require some attention. According to... And they, they, which is the site restoration part of it. And those are things that I think maybe could be, could be either waived or incorporated. Things like, you know, we have no written document, the slope can't be more than two to one, tree stumps, are we gonna require them to be taken out, hours of operation, hours in which the sledge can be hauled in, and, and those sort of, those sort of issues, they're found in the rules and regulations. It annoys me that pages were not numbered on the rules and regulations. Section... You'll have to go by, by section. So it's standards of operation, which is B on about, I think that, it's about nine pages in?
Section six.
It's, oh, section...
Six.
Six. Site restoration.
The board has a copy of the regulations.
Yeah, I'll worry.
But I can't direct you to a page, because nobody numbered the pages on our rules and regulations. Christina's gonna fix that for us, I guess. Or did you number the copy that they handed out?
No.
No.
Okay, well, it's... Okay, if you start from the back, it's the third page from the back, site restoration, six.
Great, you said bottom document from your packet, I'm sorry.
I got it.
Okay, great.
Yep.
And there, I do, looking through this, have some questions. For example, one of the criteria, so the question is, do you waive these or do you incorporate it, how do we deal with these in our decision? So, for example, restoration, no more than three acres shall be open for excavation at a time, well, that doesn't really apply, because this whole thing is an open excavation at the moment.
Right.
Right? So, restoration will be completed within sixty days after the expiration of a permit, well, this permit expired years ago. So, really, B doesn't apply very much either. C is interesting, it says land must be left in condition no less valuable for development where use is allowed in the residential agricultural zone than it was before the operation. Is it even possible? I mean, I don't know, is it something we need to consider? Maybe that's one we want to waive too, they'll get it as good as they can. Anyway, it's these things. I do think we could require the slopes, the two to one slopes, so you didn't have any steep slopes. I do think debris, there, there are a lot of trees and so forth that are growing around the edge of the soil they're gonna use, are we gonna require them to... What, what they say is all debris, stumps, boulders, et cetera, will be moved, removed from the site and disposed of in appropriate location, or, in the case of inorganic material, buried and covered with at least two feet of topsoil. I don't know what to do about the stumps, that's one of the issues I have.
There are no stumps, it's just trees younger than twenty years old.
Oh, they're all, they're all saplings, okay.
Yeah.
What's hard is we went to this site view to see where the land that was being used for the reclamation stopped and your other land.
It was the field before.
Okay.
So, it's gonna be a field after we get done.
I, I think also they talk about, in three, and again, it may be, or four, may be appropriate for a, a waiver, based on my chemical reading of the stuff, this says retained topsoil, which, which it is, because you're not gonna import, import topsoil.
It's already there.
Yeah, so the retained top, retained topsoil approved by the planning board shall be spread over the distributed area to a depth of four inches and treated with three tons of lime per acre, and one thousand pounds of fertilizer per acre, and I think probably a lot, something, again, I don't know, and it may be up for discussion. But I think I read that there's a, the acidity of this material going in, you don't need the lime, is that correct?
Yeah, I think the, that sentence also says unless otherwise determined by permit conditions.
Oh, so that's already in the permit?
That would be part of the permit, in other words, you would not require the application of fertilizer, and...
Based on the pH that is already is coming in, this material, eh?
Yeah, based on, not just pH, but yes.
Okay. All right, I was just trying to... All right, and then I know a lot of these things are, are not applicable, because we, we know that it's... It doesn't incorporate wetlands, it doesn't...
Correct.
It's not near, the private wells are not near it, it's not...
So, all I'm pointing out is they didn't ask for waivers from these, and they might have needed to. The other thing, if I can back you up just a little bit, in Section seven A general, which is standard conditions, they didn't ask for waivers from any of the standard conditions, and standard conditions are the front of the conditions that we put. So it's, it's, it's a lot of operational stuff, noise thresholds, limited work, timing, groundwater. They didn't ask for any of those waivers, and that's really appropriate, so that they're agreeing, by not asking for those waivers of Section seven A, they are agreeing that they will comply with those criteria. And those really are the meat and potatoes of what we're talking about.
Agree, yeah.
Is it too late to apply for a waiver on those? Because that was just a misinterpretation on our part.
I think there was a misinterpretation, I kind of agree, because you put a lot of things as not applicable, thinking you wouldn't need...
Right.
So I, I guess the question is, I, I've been struggling with this, I've spent a lot of time on this, actually. Is how, how we proceed, how we proceed from here?
I have a straightforward suggestion.
All right, give us a straightforward suggestion, what can we, what can we do tonight, and what would have to wait until a decision is drafted, and what help can you give us in drafting that decision if we were to okay it? I don't...
You make a finding under Section six.
Okay.
So rather than... So rather than the applicant, you closed the public hearing, no information shouldn't be submitted. But you make a finding under Section 6 that you say that the, these subject provisions, the planning board do not consider appropriate to this application and therefore are not part of either your consideration or will not be part of your permit. And then you identify what they are simply by citation, um, and your header just explains why it's not applicable.
They would have to present it tonight also, or...
I think that the planning board can do that on its own action, and the applicant does not need to do it. So we would, we would draft that as part of the permit. In other words, in any permit, you say, here are the right, here's the applicant, here are the reg, the applicable regulations, here's the information that they provided us. The standard for approval is no harm, et cetera, et cetera, which is the fore, the front part of the bylaw. And then you make findings, and the findings are, we find that this is a reclamation project and not a gravel removal, and therefore the granting of waivers is appropriate. We make a finding that Section 6 does not specifically address this particular application, and therefore, you know, our decision takes that into account, and we list the waivers, and you, you identify if they've asked for a waiver. I always recommend that the board, um, take them individually, but since these are en masse and you make a finding way up in the body of the project to say, this whole section doesn't apply, we've made a finding, then you can simply say, Section 5, B, one through seven are not applicable, and we grant the waiver to them, and we can streamline it in that formal process. But I think that in order to do that in a pretty cohesive way is we need a draft decision.
Well, would it be appropriate, and I guess I'm the one should know this, but to a vote to, to, I don't wanna incur your fees if there's really objection to this plan on this board. You understand? So if we voted to approve the application tonight, subject to, with, granting the, with the waivers requested and making a finding that, uh, Section 6 is not applicable, but an order of conditions that addresses, and maybe we list those concerns, is necessary. So, vote, vote to approve, subject to a, um, being able to issue a decision which incorporates those.
You can do that.
Conditions. And then we get pretty clear what we're looking for, so...
I mean, 7A is operationally, it really outlines a lot of the protective measures. And I have the regulation if somebody wants to look at it, I haven't highlighted it. It's the hours of operation, what to do if there's a complaint. They shall not dig below the localized groundwater table without cause, things like that.
Forty feet down.
It's fine. We're just discussing this on, on a big upper plane level.
Yeah.
So we, we could, you, you, I think we could vote to approve it, subject to those, that decision, and then hopefully have a meeting?
Yes, and I'm, I'm...
Uh, in two weeks, if that gives you enough time, so their season doesn't?
To write a decision?
Yeah, so it doesn't have to go over a whole nother year because winter.
Right.
Um, and I don't know whether...
If you go sixty days, you should put me into November.
Yes, that's what I'm thinking. But we, but we have all, always reserve the third Wednesday in every month to come back if we need to.
That's fine.
So that would give you two weeks, to, be, basically give him two weeks, but you could have some input. I mean, you should let him know if he's gonna put conditions in that are gonna cause trouble, and there's another way we can work around it. You can talk to him, and there may be some compromises.
Nothing I've heard so far causes me trouble.
Okay. So shall...
Can we do it any quicker than that?
Maybe going out to sixty days, that's just kind of puts us in...
No, I was, I was thinking...
We were hoping to start sooner than that if we're gonna do this.
Well, once he gets the decision signed, he's free to go. So if we, if we could get that done on the twenty...
So this is a local bylaw?
Yes.
And I don't know what the statutory appeal period is for a local bylaw, under Mass General laws?
My belief is he could proceed if somebody...
I know he can proceed at his own risk.
Yeah.
We try to do law-abiding citizens. Eric has a comment, he's on the planning board in Hardwick.
I'm just curious, is this a special permit?
No. It's a, it's a permit under a local bylaw.
So I, I then couldn't answer the question whether there's a typical twenty day appeal.
Right.
It's an interesting question.
I have a question.
Yes, Bill.
I just wanna get clarification on official, official capacity for the planning board and the folks that are here and anybody might watch this, of their, their complaint on the root load, operation up there and the odors and what they found on the road and all that. 'Cause it sounds like it's two different processes and this is not gonna be part of that.
That was the fertilizer that they...
Well, I just wanted to get clarification here, 'cause we heard a little discussion about that. I think it's important everybody to hear that.
Yes.
Yes.
I would like to say that this is a whole different operation because it's a paper mill pulp. What we've experienced in certain people, who know what they're doing, it's mixed with human waste also, and that's on the topsoil stuff, and that's what all the general questions I was asking really have nothing pertaining to the pulp. We all smell paper mills, I'm sure, on a bad day. You know, we recognize that. But when they put storage mixed with it, it, like I said, it, it's exactly, it's a septic system. It's just, it, it shouldn't be allowed to be put in any residential area, period. That's how raw it is.
And what it's doing to our well water.
And we're concerned about runoff and stuff. I mean, what we've got is done, and I'm not trying to, uh, you know, take it away from a farmer. I understand the crop supply and all that stuff, but, I mean, I don't know what happened to the, no one knows what happened to it after years of it. I don't, the animals eating whatever's in the stuff they put down, too. And then we, it's a crazy train. I mean, we've done a great job with the service, we all know that, so... But that's it, no, it has nothing to do with what he wants to do and...
Well, I was, I agree with you, and when I read the original application, there was talk about other sludges or other, I mean, I really had to dig into the details. But where it's ninety percent of paper fiber, and if you think of that, um, I think it is a safer material, but that doesn't... Oh dear. Okay. Doesn't mean we should not put odor mitigation...
God says it's okay.
I think, uh...
The generator just kicked in.
Um, I don't know if we're recording anymore.
Oh, we're not recording?
They're probably not.
It may have reset our recording, I don't see any of the lights on.
Is there, uh, anybody in the back room?
Yes, they are.
All right, so, I don't know if this is part of that, and can we legally proceed?
We have lights on the cameras, they won't be recording again.
My question is, can we legally proceed if, if, if recording is stopped?
Yes, as long as minutes are being taken.
Okay.
All right, well...
Do you have somebody?
Recording was not interrupted, we have a UPS and, and power supply, so...
So we can proceed?
You are still being recorded.
Thank you. Thank you.
Wanna keep us legal here?
All right, I, I, we do have a lot of other things on the agenda as well tonight. So maybe we are ready to try to frame a vote, a motion. Um, and I don't know, as chair, I usually don't make motions, but I've taken the notes on this, so maybe I can suggest a motion, and then you can modify it.
Can we do a basic motion?
I think it would, I don't know how basic, 'cause you gotta incorporate the decision.
Well, the, the, make a motion to go forward with the permit and approve it as written.
As applied.
As what we're gonna get from you, correct? Isn't, isn't he gonna give us a review of what the...
Yeah, I'm gonna try to say this.
Okay.
So we've got, so we know what we're doing, all right? A little bit with a little more deep defining. To approve the project, uh, application tonight, subject to being able to, um, su- subject to a written decision, draft of a written decision being presented to us, which grants the waivers requested in the application and may grant other waivers if they're found not to be applicable to the permit, but does address, uh, the Section 1A, 7A?
7A, yeah.
Issues regarding such things as, uh, application procedure, trucking hours, context in case problems arise, inspection procedure, grades, and whatever else our consultant deems appropriate. Would that be an appropriate motion? Can you read that back?
No.
No.
I'm sorry, I get the, uh, the verbatim off of those.
Let's get complicated.
So it was to approve the project, subject to the issuance of a draft written decision by the consultant, which may grant waivers as applicable, not to include the provisions of Section 7A standard conditions.
Yes.
That's what I got.
Yes. Is that, would that work? Bill, this doesn't give him as much discretion, this gives him some marching orders, what he's gotta do with this decision.
Does that sound okay to you? I wanna make sure we can move the project forward, I wanna make sure we protect everybody and have our permit going forward properly too. I don't want us to get...
Now, Bill does not make the motion, so we need to make sure that we have the right wording. Bill would be so kind and thorough with this, boss.
Well, you want, you want your wording to be imprecise for the approval, but the decision itself will be precise. So you want your, your motion to be broad, to approve, subject to, and I, I think you've got it covered.
Okay.
Because what you're doing is you're saying, you as the board approve of the project, but we need to come up with our standard conditions and the granted waivers in order to make this workable and able to be filed at, wherever.
I like that.
That's pretty much, that's pretty much what you said.
So, I have some detailed questions for you. File at the registry deeds, don't file the registry deeds, those kind of things. Which we can work out, outside the meeting before we lose power again.
Okay. All right, all right.
Unless that's a board question.
All right, generally, generally, the chair doesn't make the motion, but I'll make the motion I stated, if you think it's, as, as amended by our consultant, if you think it's sufficient.
Yeah, well, you're gonna have to vote on the decision itself. So you're voting to approve, the real vote is the decision.
I make a, how about I make a motion to approve the permit as presented with, with the stipulations of the permits?
Point of order, I think you already have a motion.
I just wanna make it gen- more general, so I don't wanna miss anything.
Now, I have a little tension there, I wanna make it fairly specific. I wanna grant the mo, I want to grant the waivers that he's requesting.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
Okay.
So if, if, if you think it's not too tight, we'll go with what I said.
Good one.
Right?
Right.
So, this means that he, he's gonna expend some funds too, because he, he can't do his work for free. And that is, that is the obligation of the applicant.
How long do you think this is gonna take you?
So, maybe I could get some idea from you about how many hours you think in, might be invested to get to this decision? Am I putting you on the spot? But I don't, I can't take it out of our town funds, so...
It's gonna take eight hours. It's gonna take two to three hours to write it. Um, then there's an hour to a coordination, and then there's the final meeting and any, any edits or whatever changes that you have, so it's about eight hours. Thousand dollars.
Okay, just so you understand what...
That's fine. Just like to move on with this.
Okay, all right, so you understand, because if we're asking him to do it in two weeks, he's, you know, he's gonna have to be paid for that work.
When do I have to issue a check?
For the decision?
Really, really would be as soon as possible, would be good if we take the vote.
What I will do, just for the benefit of everybody, I will develop a draft decision next week, and then I will circulate it to the board, and I'll circulate it to the applicant and to you for your comment and review. Uh, I simply ask that nobody hit reply all, ever. Because that, the planning board can't do that. Your comments are to be directed back at me, and then I will share them. If that's okay.
All right.
Have it go to you, correct?
Yeah, have it come to me.
Right.
Yes, thank you. Also, I just wanna, point of order, we do have a motion on the table, not a second. I know that we're in discussion, but typically discussion comes after a second.
Right.
Making a point. Anybody wanna second my motion?
We did have a second, right?
Nope.
No, there was...
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Okay, so this discussion goes in with, doesn't have to be part of the motion, but, so you know. All right, are you ready to vote on the motion?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? No, okay, curious then. So is everybody available to meet back here on the twenty?
First.
First, six thirty? We'll make it a short.
I will confirm, I do believe that is available.
Okay.
Uh, I cannot, we're have to, I can do Monday night if we can change it, so go on application. Again?
Again?
Application time, the bird.
Well, three people can do, and we do have a fifth member that will contact.
Yeah, I would really like to be here, though.
Is it, is it, I, I'm, I'm flexible. I have flexibility on a Monday, assuming again that that is, does not interfere with anything that you are...
Pushing it even tighter, but, Bill?
So you voted to approve?
Yes.
And it's an administrative action of the board to endorse it on the twenty first?
Upon receipt of your final...
Assuming that each individual board member is good with the final draft, you don't, you don't have to do it during a public hearing, is what I'm saying. You can actually go at your convenience to the planning office and endorse it as a member of the planning board if the final draft is acceptable without public hearing and individual input.
Do we need a public hearing?
Meeting.
I'm sorry, a public meeting at that point in time.
Cause you've approved it. But if there, if there are s- changes, if, if I can incorporate the changes and every member of the board can't individually say the changes are okay, then you need a meeting to discuss it, if there, we need to editorialize it.
You wanna take that chance, that it's gonna be a good enough draft, that we don't have to meet again?
My concern is, is that, since we don't know what it is, that is, I mean, what the final wording is.
Yeah.
And I, I think it... I'm sorry?
I'm a wordy person, so...
It's not that, it's just that we need to, we need to, we need to establish that what is actually being presented is what we are expecting. And I think that from that perspective, a public meeting is required.
Uh, you're better off at a public meeting.
I think we are. Rather than trying to gather a bunch of...
I, I, I just, I just wanna make sure that we don't get into a legal issue afterwards for not having had a public meeting. If you understand where I'm coming from.
Could I ask you a question?
Yes.
You said it's gonna take eight hours to do this, is, could we do this the week before this meeting to get the information from you?
No, we're not those only customer.
Exactly.
Is that too...
Well, no, the issue, the issue isn't my drafting, it, that's gonna be kinda, I'll be able to get to that someday next week. The issue is I need to make sure that each one of you and the applicant, and any member of the public that wants to see a copy, gets a copy and has a reasonable opportunity to review it. So, again, if any member...
Which is the purpose of the public meeting, by the way.
Right.
For, for the decision.
Well, no, but it, at, at the public meeting, we can actually read that.
You can read it and you can change it, right?
Correct, and, and whoever is part of the public who would like to participate at that point in time can come and present their point of view.
Correct.
Or objection, if that were so required.
But you do not need to take public comment because you closed the public hearing.
Correct.
Okay. I don't wanna repeat this, I wanna...
Right, right.
But I do wanna get everybody on the same page.
Right.
I have no objection to going for the Monday, if you really wanna be part of it, but...
Is that your potential availability to have things ready?
Are you available on, on Monday instead of a Wednesday?
It'll be the nineteenth.
Would it be done by then? It would be the nineteenth, right?
Or, or Tuesday, too, Tuesdays.
You gotta look at whether the room is available to...
Right.
Well, that's true.
We can go next door.
If available on Monday night, it's select board meeting night, right?
Maybe.
It's not Monday, the twelfth, it's Monday, uh...
The nineteenth.
The nineteenth.
The nineteenth, this, the parks...
You're not available?
We cannot, we don't have a room, so we better go with the twenty first, and, but...
I disagree, we have this room that many meetings...
We recorded a meeting on Monday while the select...
Does it have recording capability?
Well, they are portable, they brought a portable...
Portable.
Are you required to be recorded at all meetings?
We are not, as long as we have minutes, I don't know if I can make the nineteenth.
Oh.
But if somebody else is willing to take minutes. I can try and get childcare, that's my problem. But if somebody else is willing to take minutes. I can try and get childcare. That's my problem on Monday.
Or we just tape record it like we did the old bit.
I was saying, if it's recorded handheld.
Right.
Okay, I can see.
Okay, the 19th. You're going to confirm that to the board? We'll make 19th, 6:30?
I can't be here on the 19th.
You can't. All right. Let's go to the 21st, and I know you won't be able to make it, but hopefully John, our new member, will be able to make it.
I mean, we can't. The 20th doesn't work for anybody.
Tuesday, the 20th?
I mean, that's really pushing it because, you know, I also have to pack, but I really want to be here.
You can, you know, you can comment. Send your comments to Christina. You have a chance to read it ahead. I think we should probably stick with the 20th because I have penciled off that room, and that's our standard practice. So Wednesday, the 21st, is that right? At 6:30? Also, as we go through our agenda tonight, there may be other things I want to put on that agenda. It's getting late.
I understand. We can fill that up if we were necessary.
Can you speak to John tomorrow? Make sure he can make it?
I'll email him.
Okay. All right.
6:30, right?
6:30. This room, 21st. Unless it doesn't work out. She's going to work and make sure we have a quorum, and then we'll try to find, try to deal with the logistics of doing something else. All right. Can't even find my agenda here. Here we go. All right, so this ends this discussion of this matter. Thank you for coming, Motters. And we will take all your comments into consideration about order and so forth in our order conditions. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd like you to read back to the board.
Okay. This relates to this hearing. Relates to this hearing. All right. I don't know how out of line, out of order this is, but I will read it. This is a letter from Ann Smith.
May I have order?
It says regarding from Ann Smith to the Planning Board of the Hall, July 10th, Planning Board meeting. Dear Mrs. Livdahl, I would like you to this letter read during the August 7, 2019 Planning Board meeting, so it is in the minutes. I watched the July 10, 2019 Planning Board meeting for the town of Hubbardston that was available on YouTube. It was stated that in that meeting, the Pacers were expected to attend. After the June 26 Planning Board meeting and the site visit on June 29 at 26 Worcester Road, it was known that a check for $1,425 along with other paperwork that was needed to set up the public meeting for the reclamation that would take place, at the very least, 10 days. I'm sorry, I'm not reading this right. It was known that a check for $1,425 along with other paperwork that was needed to set up the public meeting for the reclamation that would take place, at the very least, 10 days, for the letters to go out and notices to be placed in the Garda News before the public meeting could take place. Okay, I understand. James Talby of Casella Organics, who was at the site visit with some of the members of the board advised me that it was also stated at the June 29 site meeting that the taxes had to be current or a payment plan had to be set up with the town treasurer before anything could proceed with reclamation. Only on the 2nd of July, I went to the tax collector's office in Hubbardston and paid the balance of the taxes in full. At the July 10, 2019 Planning Board meeting, you stated that taxes were still not paid, even though Francois tried to tell you that they were in fact current. Before something is stated in fact at a public meeting that is televised on YouTube, the planning board members should make sure they have their facts straight. If you had checked with the tax collector's office before beginning the July 10 meeting, you would have known that the taxes were in fact current a week prior to the meeting. In light of this and in behalf of the Katastel family, I am requesting a public apology from the chair for false statements that were made regarding our taxes. If I made a mistake, you certainly have my sincere apology.
Thank you very much. I have received inquiries from people asking us if we need to borrow money to get our taxes paid. Do you know how that makes me feel? You know, especially if they were already paid, you know, other people in town.
I do apologize.
Brought that to my attention, you know, and it shouldn't have been.
Correct.
Shouldn't have been said at that meeting if you didn't know for a fact that they were not paying, and they were.
I do apologize.
Thank you very much.
I truly was not aware. Thank you. Okay. Matters not reasonably anticipated by the chair. There are none that I have to offer tonight.
Sorry, we're on the back of the thing.
Yep, you have.
Oh, I'm skipping ahead.
It's unfortunate, but I should have probably said at the time, I understand she was upset, as everybody volunteers. Unfortunately, sometimes things do get missed.
Well, it was certainly a mistake on my part, and I certainly owe her apology. Okay, our next item, and I do apologize also to Mr. Dubois, who's been sitting here for a long time. We have an interview for an associate member of our Planning Board, and Mr. Dubois has applied.
As did Tom Robinson.
I sent out an email on the first, letting both of them know that if they were unable to make it for this meeting, they should let me know as soon as possible. I've received no response from Mr. Robinson.
Okay. Well, having heard that, and having closed our deadline for applying, as long as he was notified, I'd like to hear from Mr. Dubois. He has sent, you sent us a nice letter.
Thank you, yes.
We appreciate it very much.
Are you sure you want to do this?
We had agreed, you can go ahead and introduce yourself. We had agreed to sort of a few questions to be asked, but the first one is, tell us a little bit about yourself and who you are. I know we have in your letter, but our viewers don't have it, so.
Just one second before you start. What was our timeframe on this? I forgot. Two, pick somebody.
It was the end of July was when we closed the application process, and then we're voting to recommend this applicant tonight.
To the selectman.
Yep.
I guess I'll just go ahead and read you basically my letter. My name is Josh Dubois. I live at 139 Old Princeton Road in Hubbardston. I've lived in town since April 2018, and I am applying for the position of the Planning Board Associate Member. I'm an operating engineer and have been operating heavy construction equipment for private contractors for 17 years. My work has primarily been focused on site development, municipal pipeline, roadway construction, also bridge repair and construction. I think my experience and knowledge of the construction industry could be put to good use serving that board. Having hands-on experience in the heavy construction industry has taught me to think practically and logically and has strengthened my problem-solving skills. Working on municipal pipeline and roadway projects has also given me experience incorporated in with residents affected by invasive construction. I'm eager to serve the town of Hubbardston. I recently joined the Hubbardston Lions Club and looking to further my public service participation. Although I have not lived in town very long, I intend to settle here and have a valued interest in decisions that are sustainable for the long-term success of Hubbardston. An associate board member would be a good fit for me to learn the history and background of the bylaws, rules, and regulations that the board oversees. Having a chance to serve as an associate member would give me the opportunity to engage with more knowledgeable members of the board and work toward providing valuable input.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
That's great. You also have a letter of support that I believe was sent in, which I'm having trouble locating. Do you know which? I thought maybe it was. I thought Ben Ritchie had said something or somebody else.
Nope.
No.
No, okay.
I make a motion that we recommend him to the selectmen as our associate member.
I second that motion. Discussion?
Would you like to, you want a second?
No, no, I thought it had been seconded.
Second. We can open the discussion after seconded. Go ahead.
You can open up to this. Yes.
I was just going to say that, you know, I'm pleased that Josh Dubois has applied for this position. I know him through the Lions Club and through the Larson family, and he's very enthusiastic about what he does. He's a very hard-working person, and I think his construction background and engineering background would be helpful to the town in terms of looking at some of the zoning that may need to be changed in the future, and also have some practical knowledge on particular projects that might come before the board. I would give him my recommendation.
It's nice to have new people getting involved, too. That's awesome.
Absolutely.
Personally, having come up through the ranks like that myself, I think it's a great learning experience. I learned from a lot of individuals who are here. And I do appreciate the fact that, again, somebody who has an interest to volunteer their time. As you saw tonight, sometimes these meetings can take a little longer than we expect, but there's good reason for that. And this is a very good ground for you to get a lot of good information and learning, and also contribute in ways that I think are beneficial for us to get information, so this is good. I do believe that we did have another candidate. Is there any reason for us to not to present?
The other candidate became our new fourth member.
No, no, I'm talking about the fact that we're not going to discuss this one at all, right?
He didn't. He didn't give me any information about why he wasn't showing up tonight, and this was the interview.
When did you send?
I sent it on the first, and before that, I sent it last month as well, so that he was aware that August 7 was the date.
At this point in time, we have two applications, but only one has come actually for the interviews, what we're stating here categorically.
Yes.
Okay.
I think procedurally, it's very important to make sure that, you know, we do things appropriately.
And then we recognize it. There are two applicants in this here.
Applied and thanked them for their interest.
Right. I thought we already done it when we discussed it.
So just to also be clear, this is a recommendation for the appointment. So we are making the recommendation that then goes to the select board at their next meeting, correct? Very similar to what we have.
Yes, it will be sent, yes.
Exactly.
Yes.
Very good. Okay. So we have a.
Because the way the bylaw reads is the select board also has to.
Yeah.
We put forward a candidate.
They have to appoint.
And have the final approval.
As we have finally established.
Correct, just so you know, it was the 16th of last month that he was first notified, and then he was notified again on the first.
Was there any response to the first?
There were no responses to either, but they were sent to a known email address.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
People change their mind, you know.
Right.
So I think we should not hold it open longer because it is a quorum problem.
Absolutely.
About a fifth member.
Associate member.
Well, our fifth member we have. Associate member could be a problem. As it presently stands, the associate member just works on special permit issues. I mean, you can sit in with us, you can add to the discussion, but that's what you would vote on. We, it's also further down on the agenda, and we have to talk about it a little bit more as a board. But we are looking into some towns allow their associate member to vote if there's an absence, which would help on the quorum issues, but we need an opinion on that before we can expand the tradition here. So.
So we have a motion?
So it's a motion to recommend the appointment of Mr. Dubois, is that how you say it? To the selectmen as our candidate for the associate member of the planning board.
Let's take a vote. Is there a second? Second, right?
No, second by Alice.
Alice seconded it. I made the motion.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Congratulations. Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for participating.
Yes, thank you.
We look forward to having you here.
It's not welcome aboard until the select.
I should say, Michael.
I don't think it'll be a problem.
Thank you. Thank you for giving the law.
I have a book of all the bylaws that you'll have to read through in less than a week. No, just kidding.
There will be a test.
You'll have to get sworn in and do, again, after the appointment is finalized.
And as a tutorial, so you familiarize you on the computer. You take it, open meeting law and conflict of interest laws.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night. Good night.
Oh, yeah, you can help me.
Let's try to plow through for at least another 15 minutes and see what we can.
Do we get down to the complaint at?
You want to take something out of order? What?
What's the corner of Morgan? Is that the 176 Gardermore?
Yes, I brought that up.
Yes, I actually heard a few complaints from some residents about that also.
Are you talking about the new business complaint?
Yeah.
We can take it out of order. I think, especially after the meeting tonight with our
Building inspector?
Building inspector, it's in his court to take a look at that, make a determination.
Shall I listen over to him?
And we need to, says this email was forwarded to the planning board from the building department who is handling it.
But just keeping us informed.
Keeping it so it was transpiring with the property.
So somebody already came forward to the building department, then?
Yeah, if you look at the, there's a, the email is in here.
Right.
Copy of it.
And then the port of health is also now, what it says is also involved?
I don't know.
But we need to be.
Tuesday, so.
We need to stick around, though. I mean, put that on hold and see what the building inspector.
Right, right.
Happens, so we don't compromise.
Back to us, right.
Don't make any pre-guesses on how that's going to come out, right? Let's see what happens. I want to jump back up and stay in line. The Economic Development Committee needs a nomination. It meets once a month, I guess. Did you end up sending out an email to anybody?
I did, and I did get one reply.
Yeah.
I did, since I mentioned in the email that anybody could apply whether or not they'd be at this meeting or not, it could be, put their name forward for nomination. And our newest member, John Demoli, did ask that his name be put forward for nomination for that position.
Sounds good.
Sounds good to me.
If he's willing, I think it might be a good match. When I listened to him speak in our joint session, he's very interested in business.
Yes.
The business side of development and economic development might be something he is interested in.
Right.
So, is anyone going to make a motion to, do we need a motion for that?
Yes, because I need to nominate him, and then I need to have that name sent to the select board to have him appointed.
I'll make that motion to Demoli as the Economic Development nomination.
There you go. A second, anyone?
I will second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. E, in your package, Christina developed a letter for us after we spoke about expanding the role of the, getting an opinion on whether we could allow our alternate member to sit in, to participate in planning board discussions, they can do that anyway, but to also vote on matters that come before the planning board in the event of an absence of another member.
I think that's great.
So, I know towns do it.
Does anybody have concerns about your opinion on being voiced if that happened? If I could make the next meeting, would you mind if somebody else stood in your seat without me?
Well, the only concern I have is that if somebody comes in without necessarily having a complete history, so. I think it's important to ensure that the individual who is, because, for example, as an associate member previously, I was not privy to a lot of the information that was being disseminated by the prior chair. And if I'm suddenly called into something as an associate member, I believe that we just need to ensure that the relevant information is propagated to the associate member so that they are up to date and can, for intention purposes, fulfill the role that we're asking them people to fulfill.
Well, if we do bring them in as a member like that, we would ask them to attend all the meetings also.
Right, I think that's the other advantage.
Well.
It is an incentive to come.
It is an incentive to come.
To stay up to date with it, because very few of our things, well, our special permits, I mean, it's 100%.
Right.
But it's kind of a leap, and it may be the town council will say you shouldn't do this, in order to do this, you would need a vote.
Or go to town.
In the meantime, was the practice when you were the associate member. In the meantime, was the practice when you were the associate member, to alternate member, I'm sorry, did you got a package? You didn't get a package?
I didn't.
At the end, I started copying him on the digital copy.
Correct, but I never got a package. And I was, I was being copied on some of the items, but many of the items, sometimes also, for example, if there were minutes and things of that nature, there was not necessarily always information that I received ahead of time. There were pieces of information that you received as an associate member that did not include all of the information that the full-time member or member would receive.
Is there any reason why an associate member, until we get this decision resolved either way, could not receive a full package?
No, it was just a difference in chairs.
Okay, I think that's great, I think all the...
The point I'm making is, is I think it's at the discretion, I think, of the chair.
Of the chair, all right.
All right, and I'm bringing this up because I think it's an important piece of information that we have to install here. Go ahead.
Can I ask one quick?
Sure.
No, I was going to say, if you're still here, can we stop what we're doing and take care of him so he can leave?
He's next.
Oh, okay.
We're skipping out a lot, you know what, we'll skip...
I'm just here because I like listening in, that's all.
Oh, okay.
Alice, I just wanted to point out, I think you have to change the zoning bylaw in order to make an alternate voting member on standard materials. And then the other thing you got to follow up on is the Mullen Rule. And what the Mullen Rule is, is a member may vote on a special permit or other project when they haven't been in attendance, if they miss one meeting. If they miss two meetings, they're ineligible. And I'm pretty sure the town of Hubbardston has accepted the Mullen Rule, but again, that's another, you need both components.
Right.
And if you change zoning bylaw, that takes two-thirds to go to town meeting.
Right.
Our zoning bylaw, as it presently reads, tracks the exact language...
MGLs.
Of MGLs.
Right.
And so generally, a zoning bylaw could not confer more power than MGL does, I believe.
Point of fact, we are missing one comma.
Yes.
I apologize, I apologize.
The comma is significant.
It's an important comma, I apologize, as a contractor.
I mean, this is interesting, because generally, I would, I would agree with you that you would need to alter the bylaw, but I don't, but I have problems thinking how you could alter the bylaw, by, through bylaw, expand that position if it was limited by the general law, which takes precedence.
Right.
So, that's why I thought you could throw it into the legal, to town council and see what they say.
Not question, but the way I've seen it in other towns is you cannot be more stringent than the requirements of master general laws. You can be, you can be more stringent, not less stringent. So, the minimum standard is the law.
Yes.
So, that's how other towns have dealt with it.
So, bylaws could expand the powers enumerated in the general law.
That's how other towns have dealt with it.
At this point in time, at this point in time, if I may, I believe that it is more restrictive, the imposition of the way that the associate member has been interpreted to have their role.
Special permit.
And so, if we are, if we are going to expand it, I believe that we need to ensure that the wording in our bylaw abides by our ability to do so.
And I think they also call it not an associate member, they call them an alternate.
An alternate member, yes.
Well, perhaps, we have a couple of choices, we can just table it and take it up at a later date.
Mm-hmm.
Or, or we could alter our request for an opinion, if you felt strongly about it. That said, what would steps would we have to, what if any steps would we have to make to expand this?
Craig and Francois, are you okay with this, or you think it's important?
To have, to have the opinion, or not, to move through this?
To move forward and try and do this, or do you want to keep it the way it is?
I'm in favor for it, I mean, my schedule gets really wacky.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, I, I see the benefit of it.
Yeah.
Having been an associate in a few cases, I think I, I think I could have done some good to the board at that point in time. It was obviously the decision at that point in time that it was not to be the case.
Correct.
I have to be very clear about that. So, I, I'm not opposed to it, let's focus.
And my other reasoning for going forward to this, I think, as an associate member, if you can't be part of it, you just come here and sit and listen, what's the purpose?
That is the only concern that I am bringing up, and that is, is that in the past, I have heard conflicting ways that we are expecting that associate member, alternate member, to behave. At one point in time, you have to be supposedly in every single one of the meetings because we never know when you will be called for a special permit, that's what I was told. And then second is, is no, you're only going to be participating when we have a special permit. But I personally went through the experience where I pretty much without fail participated in every meeting, except for one, where I could not make it. So, the point I'm trying to make is, is that we need to then also set the expectations as to what the alternate members' role responsibilities are, vis a vis filling this role that we are asking them to take on in the event that they're about to, to come in and substitute, not substitute, but fill in.
Maybe what we should do is table this whole discussion. Let our new member, our new, let's see if he gets appointed.
All right.
And let's, let's let him attend a few of our meetings, and then see in three months hence what he thinks.
Because he is a contractor also, he might not be able to make all the meetings.
Okay.
Didn't you already submit a request to town council on this subject?
No, we haven't.
No, this is the draft of the letter we were getting through.
So, we'll just hold it, we'll just hold it aside and...
Okay.
You want to do that?
Yeah.
Pick it down.
I thought you already sent it, you said you seen the letter in there.
No. We haven't sent it. So, we just hold off for three months, and then we'll talk to him about his feelings on the matter.
Correct.
Is that okay?
I, I'm totally fine with that. I do, however, feel that it is important to make sure that we do get legal opinion.
Yes.
Council opinion.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
And I think Mr. Murray may be right, that it would require a town vote and a bylaw. So, we'll try to take it up before deadline for closing the warrant next spring.
Right.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna, why don't we skip over new business, since Bill is here and he's, and he has relevant stuff to tell us. So, if you skip over to old business...
91 Williams or what?
91, yeah, those three items. I don't know, 91, Williams, or we have a new opinion on, that I just got today, right? Yesterday?
Opinion? Yes, yeah, yeah.
So...
My compliance review.
The compliance review.
Is that printed out here?
That's the report, it's in the forward, the packet that was in front of you, the one...
Oh, okay, these?
The bylaws. Yeah, one of those two is, has to do with 91.
So, the question is...
It has the header in the corner, that's sort of the chief, I'm sorry.
It is a five-page?
There it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, there was a lot of paperwork tonight with all those extra minutes.
So, what we could do is, we could take this up on the 21st and give ourselves a chance to read it.
I have extra copies if someone needs them.
Any copies?
The advantage of that would be, the other two are, we could get to, 95 and 147.
Could I make a suggestion? Do you want to read through it, or do you want to ask Bill his recommendations that he gave us in this report? And what he found, maybe we could...
I'll be here on the 21st, if you want to read it.
Okay.
Then I could do it then.
I started glancing through them before I came tonight, but...
And some things have changed since I wrote this.
Oh, really?
Why don't we, why don't we take it up on the 21st? Does anybody have an objection to that?
Oh, that's fine.
Okay. I did see that there's like, there's new change of ownership and percentages, and there's an email that came in after this. Okay, so we got a two-item agenda then, on the 21st.
Okay.
Okay. But Lynn, let's go on to 95, some happy news for us. There is a report, it's in the package.
I'll have to invoice each of you who has given a copy out at the beginning of the video. The invoice looks like this.
There it is.
Yes, well, here it is. While I dig through this, do you know what, where it is in our package?
I'm sorry?
Where is it in our package?
Where is what in the package? His report is actually in the forward package.
Oh, it's in the forward, yes.
Has it arrived after the board copy? The board copy was sent out last week.
I think I had printed it out as well, is the thing. No, this is the pit restoration one.
So, it's the one under that?
And this is 91.
Oh, 95?
Yeah, 95, it was in the package.
Is it on my copy?
Yeah. 95, I thought it was 91.
Dated August 2.
I have color photos on that.
Yeah, I apologize, you're right, I did not print a copy of 95, I apologize.
But I can report on that one real easily, they're done.
Okay.
It was okay.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You got a word in to you, but I forgot to print copies of that one.
Oh, the walls done.
These are the repaired walls.
I gave you before and after pictures, yeah.
Cool.
Before being the, the one that had the problem.
The demo.
Right, the demolition ones, and this one, let me pass this on to...
So, it's not a Craftsman wall, but then what was there was not a Craftsman wall.
I understand.
But it's adequate.
Sounds good.
Got it.
Yeah, okay, fine, so...
Yeah, the miserable floor was just kind of a mess anyways.
It was a horrible wall.
Yeah.
And they at least placed these rocks.
Yeah.
The pictures do tell a pretty good story, and I did drive by it.
You have, awesome.
Yes.
Okay.
I've seen it.
Would you like copies of this here that Christine gives?
No, we got it in our emails.
Okay.
Is that what we got?
Yep.
They did.
Oh, all right. I didn't open the pictures at that time.
Is there a requirement on our side at this point in time to indicate that we have not only received this report, but what we feel that is now...
In compliance.
Complaints?
Here's the issue on this, we are holding money for this guy that he expects back for completion.
Yeah.
$2,400. And...
Minus.
And Bill has put a significant amount of work into this.
Yeah.
On 1,04625, for his outstanding time as detail.
1,05855.
I forgot your mileage, didn't I?
Oh, yeah, the tolls on the...
It's on the oversight.
So, this invoice, which is invoice 5399.01, is in regards to the 95. And we had indicated, oh, I'm sorry, we need not, the planning board at that point in time had indicated that the funds that they were putting up was to cover the cost of your...
So, they gave you $2,400.
Yeah, correct.
And it took me $1,500. Actually, it took me a lot more because I went into the backland research and everything else, but that wasn't the Stonewall guy's stuff. So, I didn't bill it.
I'm sorry, you say $1,500, yet I see something that says 1,058.
Because he's been paid for previous.
No.
No?
He said he didn't bill it.
Oh, he didn't bill it.
And in the back is more...
No, that's the total, 1,05855, but that's not the rate.
Not what I gave you.
Okay, that's why I asked. No, it is.
No, that's what I gave you. All right, yeah, that's right.
So, there's, this is the right number?
That's it.
Okay.
The computer's put it on it.
Oh, okay.
So, I think what we need tonight is to, is a vote which would be to accept the opinion of Places Associates
Mm-hmm.
that the repaired wall is of sufficient length and quality of construction to be a suitable replacement wall for the damaged wall. Close the matter and return...
Balance, the balance.
Right, the balance of the deposit after paying Places and Associates fee.
And that there were no, no additional costs, or were there?
No administrative fee was incurred by the previous board, they didn't vote an administrative fee on this project.
Okay.
So, we, that's on the record, it's only this.
Okay, well, at that point in...
I moved that motion, then.
Christina, you have the motion, is that okay? Can you attribute it to, to Bill there?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I would like to second the motion.
I have one question, which is, were they aware, when you, when you finished this, that you were satisfied with the construction?
No.
Okay.
They, it thundered that day, and I got there at 5:00, and we had a thunderstorm at 4:00, they were gone.
Oh.
So, I assume that you'll forward my letter, or have forwarded my letter to them?
No, I have not yet, but I will, I can.
That's traditionally, yeah, my letter.
Okay, so it could forward your letter?
Yeah.
Your invoice and our vote.
Right.
Yes.
Sounds good.
Can you agree with the discussion?
No. No more.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And thank you for...
Thank you very much.
Taking share of this.
You want to, thank you, Bill, yeah. You want to address 147, maybe, maybe it's not your email from the building department. Oh, maybe you're not aware of this, were you consulted on this?
I know something.
This, Christina's notes tell us that the, we received an email, actually a copy of an email
Right, exactly.
from the building department, in which it was described that, how do you say it? Borego may be delaying building until next year, the permit's valid until 2020, it's actually July 1st of 2020, or something like that, middle of the summer. And may be extended if necessary for good cause. Also, the planning board office received an email from Places Associates August 1st, that's when you come in, that an updated quote may be necessary for this project because of the extended period of administrative needs prior to the building commencing. So, let's sort this out. I don't know what the motive for the delay is, but I do know he has until next summer to act on his permit.
And I know why. They said to me, there's a lot of history on this one. I was hired by the planning board to do a site walk when Borego first made the application. And when I did that site walk, I said, your wetlands line is wrong, because I do wetlands delineation. So, the conservation, the Hubbardston Conservation Commission hired me to walk the property with Borego's wetlands person, and we delineated, we walked the entire project, and we redelineated the wetlands, and they sent the surveyors back out to get the wetlands. They have since found what they call more wetlands on the property, and they're voluntarily going back to the conservation commission and changing the plan apparently, because they found more wetlands. And I reported back to Borego, because they sent me a note to that effect, that the wetlands that they found, their consultant and I agreed, weren't jurisdictional and didn't need to be shown on the plan. And I haven't heard anything since then, but that, that is potentially why they...
They weren't jurisdictional, why?
So, a wetland has to be big enough.
Okay.
It has to hold water, it, pond hold water, or it has to be hydraulically connected to another wetland. Otherwise, it's an isolated wetland, and it's not subject to jurisdiction by the conservation, you can fill it. And their wetlands expert and I agreed that that wetland, which was a spring wetland, came up out of the ground and went about 10 feet and went back into the ground, and wasn't sufficient to qualify under the Wetlands Protection Act. Maybe things have changed. We've had two wet years. Maybe the spring is now springing and flowing all the way down, and if, if it flows, and there's a flow path that connects it to another wetland, that's what we call a hydraulic connection, and it's jurisdictional. So they, on their own motion, said it was jurisdictional wetland and are changing their plan.
Once it becomes jurisdictional, does it stay like that no matter what for, I mean, no?
It's the condition that you find, well, there are two answers to the question. It's the condition that you find at the time that they make an application to the Conservation Commission, and they have an order of conditions. Once the Conservation Commission issues their permit, even if you find a pond on, that's probably a little egregious, but once the Conservation Commission issues a permit, they agree that what you show on the plan
Yes, correct.
is correct unless they have a notation saying, we're only agreeing to the northwest corner of the property or whatever. So technically speaking, they did not have to report this, nor did they have to worry about it, but they brought it forward on their own volition.
So now it's on record, though, that this is a, it is a jurisdictional wetland.
So I can't answer that because I don't know the answer because I didn't talk to the Conservation Commission. They, they put it forward to me. Whether they've actually gone back to the Conservation Commission or not, I don't know.
And they have to make that determination.
That's, it's a self-imposed hardship of mine.
Has your work for us been paid? Your work on behalf of the planning board been paid?
I haven't invoiced you because I haven't done anything meaningful. I've done a lot of administrative, like, okay, we're going out to the site next Tuesday. Are we in fact going out to the site next Tuesday? So I've done like eight hours of that because we've had start, stop, start, stop, uh, which is why I'm telling you, I probably have twenty-five hundred dollars worth of administrative time trying to figure out what's going on because they start, stop, start, stop. And if they keep going, I'm gonna run out of money.
And this is why you're bringing the updated quote for the, for this project.
And I'm not.
What would you like us to do? Would you like us to?
When they get serious, we'll revisit it.
Right, and in the meantime, perhaps contact us before you incur any further fees on their behalf?
Yeah. I'll, I'll call their guy and say, because you have money on account.
Okay.
More than sufficient money on account to cover my, my expenses, time, and everything else to date.
I do have a question. When it says that the special permit is valid until two thousand twenty, again, there's a specific day, a month, date in two thousand twenty, correct?
It's two years from the date of approval.
And what is required to be completed by that timeline, and what is not allowed to be done beyond that timeline?
Uh, they have to have initiated construction. So that's an interpretive phrase, uh, which could mean that they went out with a shovel and dug a ditch, and therefore they've initiated construction, but in all honesty, they have to have, the, the short answer is they have to have started the project before the expiration.
I understand.
So I don't think we need to take any action on this tonight.
No.
No, no.
Okay.
And I think we can, can let Mr. Murray go home.
Yes.
Oh, but I like listening to the planning board.
Could feed the bears, right?
You could get on the planning board.
Then I can't consult.
No, we appreciate your efforts. We've kept it. It's been a long night, and we're gonna throw in the towel pretty soon anyway, but, in fact, I don't know what else you want to do. We could zip back to correspond, maybe the correspondence and get through that. That's fairly quick.
I'm gonna hit the restroom.
And some of these other things we'll put off till the next.
We have one member who is asking for.
Take a break.
Is asking for a bye break.
All right, well, I guess I'll head home and see if I have power. Usually when we lose it in the center of town, we lose it.
You say it's the Mullen Rule. I'll have to look that up. Where would that be?
It's always in Westminster, a tree falls, and it comes right up, and it hits that way.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have that letter, please?
The Mullen Rule.
Sorry, which one?
That one.
Professor Mullen was a, he's a professor emeritus at UMass Amherst, and I don't know the, the general law citation.
Is it actually in the general laws?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it is.
Okay.
It's so that a planning board member can miss a meeting, and as long as they read the meeting minutes and view the video or view whatever was submitted, that they can still participate, but the town has to accept it.
But that applies, that applies only to full members, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, no, if you're, if you're an associate sitting on a special permit, then you're considered a full need, full member for that meeting.
So anytime a special permit comes up, it's important we have our, our member here.
You need to have your associate sit with you.
Under the, associate here, under the way it present stands. So it would be under, if I were to look it up, X accepted and when less a town. All right, I'll try to do that.
I'm sure it's something under forty A because that's.
I'll check it out.
You can Google it pretty easily.
Yeah, I will.
It's only Massachusetts, Mullen.
Hate to go on with, you could, we could look at this without talking business about, I'm thinking I would like to go home. So maybe we could take under old business, uh, everything beyond bills, which is items D through H, and put them on the twenty-first. So what would, that would be is, well, we still have an ounce on the affordable housing CPA funds anyway, do we, Christina?
Uh, I don't. I have, I've gotten in touch with the CPA and with our new accountant, and there's no answer.
So we might get something more.
But hopefully we'll have something, and then I'll, I'll email them again.
And we can review that pits. Do you have a list of the actual number of the twelve pits that, uh, were referred to?
I haven't had time to work on the gravel pits list yet.
All right, so maybe that's something also that could be done, and that would be better. And the special, why don't we just take that up? So Bill, what we're talking about is taking up under old business, items D through H on the twenty-first.
So the Maryland Reunification is the affordable housing CPA funds, the special permits, as well as the planning board clauses.
I don't think we need a note.
Sounds good.
I'll vote on that.
Yep.
Uh, so we'll just, we'll just go through new business correspondence.
Okay.
And I want to cut, this covers the growth bylaws in one second, right, um, response to the last of the correspondence. So if we could go through these. Ah, Christina, you want to take over for me a minute?
Okay.
Todd Miller, she's the one that put this list together.
Well, the Todd Miller email came from Ryan. Basically, Todd Miller, as we all know, has helped get the Economic Development Committee back up and running, and he's trying to, uh, incite growth in the area. Um, we have him on for another year, and the town is paying for part of his to be on for another year, and Ryan asked if there was some way, uh, the planning board would like to utilize Todd Miller to help them because he does have planning experience. He basically, Todd, he's asked Todd for a list of his abilities that we could see, but it's also a matter of what we might consider using somebody who has that kind of expertise for, to the benefit of the planning board.
Okay.
So it's just something to consider. I don't know if you guys want to discuss it now, or if you wanted to think about it and come back to the next meeting with it, but um, it would basically be somebody we're already paying for, doing a certain number of hours. I think Ryan says he has somewhere in the neighborhood of four hundred hours. Uh, the town does, has four hundred hour, hours of his time, and what the planning board might consider utilizing some of that for.
Would you like to discuss this now, or is this something you want to postpone till the twenty-first and first of March, give some feedback?
Well, you, you guys want to think about it?
Any suggestions?
Well, I thought, I thought that we might have him look at our bylaws and map and look at what advice he might give on encouraging, what we might change to more encourage business.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Um, and perhaps affordable housing, too.
That sounds good.
Exactly.
How about information or help or whatever with our gravel pit problems with air?
I bet that's not his expertise.
It probably isn't, but he might have something there. Who knows?
You want to inquire? Yep. All right, and we can come and visit this again.
Okay.
But you want to put those thoughts down, Christina?
So when we talk about gravel pits, it's really the reutilization of that land in a manner that becomes productive, like what we're doing here with the.
Oh. Oh.
I think that's what we're looking for.
Anything, because I, it's, it's something we need to look into and take care of.
Yeah, I like that idea, because he could do that, because he could look what other towns have done.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Just to try and move forward with that, because with all the discussion tonight, it's absolutely true. Uh, they've been like that for many, many, many years. Um, and when I, for instance, I got on the planning board, a lot of them are unsafe, um, because of the sloping that's there, where it's just been left, so.
The big ones are all unsafe.
Yes. I've been out there. They, they don't look.
You know, that might be, I was thinking, I was thinking like in terms of drafting and straightening it out, and, but you're not asking it. You're talking about the land use, appropriate land use.
Anything to help us with that problem.
All right.
Because I don't have enough experience in this. I, you know, so any help we could get, I'd appreciate it.
I, I also have on my end, um, I think that whole concept of solar has been brought up in a lot of the towns here. I'd like to understand how, from a zoning perspective, and, uh, how the towns are dealing with the solar issues, because I do know that there has been issues, concerns, I shouldn't say, concerns raised not only by the citizenry of this town, but, but by other towns. And I think from that, this perspective, it will be best for us to get ahead of that curve and understand how other towns are dealing with what appears to be a very large growth in the area of solar, and doing it in such a way that we are pleasing not only our citizenry, but also providing economic benefits for our town in a manner that makes sense.
Okay.
So it's, I call it sensible solar growth.
So you want to?
I can draft a letter to that effect.
Yeah, why don't you put all those concerns in, the planning boards, some suggestions?
Do you want me to just send it to Ryan, or do you want me to bring it back for review?
I'd say Senator Ryan.
I think Senator Ryan, yes.
Okay.
Some suggestions and give him a little bit of leeway of what he'd rather help us with out of those.
About Todd Miller? Todd, yeah.
Remember, he, he's the gentleman that came in. He was bringing signs.
Yeah.
Um, which also could use some work, but that's really the zoning boards. All right.
Adam for a query?
Yeah, this is interesting. Um, this query came from a DCR employee.
Are they trying to take some more away on?
They didn't elaborate. They just made this query. Christina can explain. It's in the.
They want to know where Adams Road got discontinued, because part of Adams Road is used, and part of it is basically a walk-in. Um, they asked if we had actually a, a list, because if you look at the map of, of Hubbardston, Adams Road goes right through.
Right.
It doesn't show that part of it isn't in use, and so this gentleman is asking, do we have a list or some kind of concept of exactly where Adams Road stops and where it starts? And so I got ahold of Ryan and Travis, and Travis said that we don't have an official list, and he suggested I talk to the town clerk. The town clerk does not have an official list.
We have a list of all the roads, not their description.
Not the discontinued roads.
So the town clerk is required to keep a road book when a road is accepted, when a road is abandoned, and.
It is in the notes, huh?
It could thrown away.
What?
Oh, dear.
About twenty-some-odd years ago, it could thrown away.
Nice.
When they were reorganizing the vault. So the town, and I know this because we did, my company did some survey on the town roads. So we no longer have a road book, like ninety percent of the towns in the Commonwealth do.
Well, my understanding of the law is, just from the zoning I did years ago, is that a road is shown on the official map, unless it's labeled private road, is generally considered a public road. So you would have to take some.
It'd have to be voted out at town meeting to stop it.
Yeah, somebody needs to actually go all the way back to all town meetings for, because the town of Hubbardston in the seventies, I think it was, and I wasn't here, did vote to discontinue and abandon a lot of the cart paths.
Certain roads, yes, yes. There is paperwork, because I was working, trying to make Common Street over here.
Yeah.
It was never approved at town meeting, but they, there was an official list in the.
Well, it's a way in existence prior to zoning. That, that's something that comes with you.
But the descriptions aren't listed there.
Right, and the, the road book says it starts at Mr. Murphy's Farm, and it is at the tree trunk wherever, wherever, but we no longer have them. And it also says that the two rod road or wide road narrower, because that's how they used a, a rod of sixteen and a half.
What does the official map say?
The official map shows going all the way through.
And technically goes all the way through then, from what I'm hearing now.
But we don't.
No, I, I think technically it is.
Discontinued?
Town meeting vote, theoretically, some.
But technically, as it stands right now, there's no road book, and it's on the map, starting here and ending here. Unless we bring it to town meeting, it's still a road.
No, no, if town meeting to, there's a historical record of the action of town meeting.
Oh, well, no, in the past, if they voted it out.
Yeah.
You're absolutely right. I'm just saying if we don't have that, though, then it would still be a town road.
So you have to look backward through town meeting notes from the seventies.
DCR is good at research.
What?
DCR is good at research.
Oh, so push it back on.
There you go.
Well, I thought maybe folks in this room might know more about it than I did.
It is abandoned back there. It goes down to.
I, I think Christina was gonna, I don't know, have you responded?
I have not.
I, I suggested that she respond to the query. She did, she, I think she sent an acknowledged receipt of his question. So maybe, maybe you want to write back and say, we, we have no official road book showing discontinued roads, and it would be a matter of great legal research to establish that.
Oh, that sounds good.
Yeah, it does.
On the ground, he probably knows what's on the ground, but.
Right.
Right.
Ninety percent of the roads in Hubbardston lined with stone walls, right?
Yes.
And that's what, we got a lot of rock.
You could say although it's shown on the map, it may have been discontinued at some point, but we no, no longer have a.
And that one really wants them.
Well, yeah.
A road book stating that. I don't know. I, we, this is something we can't ask Christina to do.
No.
No.
It's out.
Okay, next item is a, um.
Old buildings.
Another inquiry she got, which was interesting, and I thought, well, I don't know this town very well, but some of you guys know in inside out. It was a voicemail, actually, requesting information from the planning board on available old warehouse-style buildings. That this person was going to rehab perhaps, or if there was any more information.
I don't know how many warehouses to speak of here.
Yeah, well, that was just.
Verbal.
I'm not seeing it here.
No, it's not in here. It was a verbal.
So, can you?
Listed here on the list.
Yeah, but other than this, is there anything?
No, but basically, his name was Alan Hope, and he was looking into old buildings in the area of warehouse-style buildings.
Across from Pitterville.
Can I ask, is this person?
That was originally called the Red Barn.
No, he left a voicemail.
It's not.
That's it.
But with a return number to call.
Yes, with a return number to call if the planning board had any knowledge of old buildings in the area.
I, I don't.
Of old warehouse-style buildings in the area.
I don't have any knowledge of those, no.
Yeah, I figured we, I didn't think, I asked the town clerk, I asked a couple people, but I wanted to bring it before the planning board. I think he was looking.
The town of Hubbardston burnt down numerous times back in the day, and they didn't.
Old warehouse-style buildings. It's all, the email was very succinct.
It's time to hire a railter.
Yeah. Thank you.
No, don't tell them that.
I didn't reply. He said only reply if you have information on this.
Okay, then it's done. We're just wondering, you know it.
Cannabis at thirty-six Gardner Road.
Yes.
Where was that? I tried to look it up.
That's right next to, um, the current pallet place, the, the extra piece further down away from the center of town. They're looking to get, they're looking to sell that supposedly. This is what I've been told, and so this, this party was interested and asked some information on it. I've since gotten, um, information on, they have, does the town have town sewer? No. Does the town have town water? No. They want to know about phase-three power, and I have since gotten a response from the building department. Phase-three power does not go down into the center of Hubbardston.
And, but really, why is the planning board giving them that information?
It was a public request from a, from somebody.
I don't think we would have to respond to that. If he wants to find that out, call the electric company.
Correct. Why are, why are we doing?
Cannabis falls under the, um, purview of the planning board.
Correct, well, I don't think they need to give them that information. They can find that out for themselves.
But there's, there's other information he requests. You, he asked about power?
Yes, and I, I forwarded him to the building department because I don't know anything about power.
And, I mean, for all intents and purposes, that would be with the electricity.
How the factory does that.
The utility company in town, if they need to get that information from them.
That's a power company.
So that's basically, she, she gave him a copy of the bylaw, which would be appropriate, I suppose.
Yes.
And tells it, tell him who to contact with regards to the other questions.
So that's the vacant lot towards Gardner, next to the pallet factory.
Yes.
Yeah.
You can't get a perk there. But I dug that. For the town, we were gonna put town facilities.
Correct, years ago.
That is, I don't know if you want to know the history. That's an old swamp, and we had a microburst there, and they backfilled it with sand and gravel for Pitterville Road. So it's got about three and a half feet of sand and gravel, and then it's got, still got the stumps and the muck soils underneath it. It's horrible.
Okay.
Well, I don't know that you want to.
I'm not going to.
We're not going to give that opinion. We're gonna let that discover.
I'm just letting you know.
Maybe.
I would say we move on and pass that over.
Uh, the Gardner Road, we sort of addressed that, is, I just want to do a heads up that if people come and approach you and want to know, can I do this in town? Can I not do this in town?
Correct, correct.
I don't like what my neighbors doing in town. The thing is to refer them to the.
The building department.
The building department, right, and not try to come up with an opinion, um, because then we can't have you weigh in on the discussion later, right? So, um, okay, we got this letter, this sort of rant about Rutland passes restrictive growth bylaw, and this resident wrote to the planning board chair saying, it was kind of a well-reasoned letter, but saying they thought the vote was very misguided because that's been Rutland's sort of ticket to success, is that it continues to build, so its schools are filled, and and she took it upon herself to write surrounding towns, don't follow this model. So I don't know, I just, but it prompted me to look into our Hubbardston growth bylaw, which is, which is a zoning bylaw, which was passed. How, when was it passed? I don't know. It expires in two thousand twenty-one, and it allows up to twenty-eight new houses per year. That caps it at that, and then there's some exceptions to it. So Christina, just for interest, my inquiry is like, how close do we come to that? She put together this great list. Did you see it?
That's attachment number ten, and that's actually posted in the building department. I didn't put it together. She, I had it right there. I copied it.
Anyway, um, you can, you can see that when it was passed, there was this mini burst, here it is, the list, of, um, houses, nineteen ninety-one, we had forty-five new housing starts, which, but in the following twenty years, it's really diminished drastically. So last year, there were seven, the year before that, eight, year before that, five, two thousand fifteen, ten, twelve, nowhere near approaches that fourteen. So that's just sort of a point of interest, uh, but also that bylaw is. So that's just sort of a point of interest, but also that bylaw is self-expiring, but not till 2021. But it's worth thinking about since you got to work about a year ahead if you want to have a growth control bylaw anymore, or maybe we just want to let it expire on its own. Something to think about.
You, you probably want to ask Mr. Miller about that because the attorney general came down about five years ago and put criteria for growth rate bylaw and you must have a certain level of justification and there must be a read, there must be an overriding reason to restrict people's buy right development.
Okay.
So the town, by example, the town of Holden has one on projects of a certain size. You can only do no more than 20% of a project with 50 or more lots in any one year. And they say that is because their infrastructure is being taxed, their schools are being taxed and they've demonstrated that through their master plan.
So presume it's.
And that's a big planning issue that I bet your Miller guy would know about.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, you could put that added to Todd Miller's list, his growth controlled bylaw. Generally, attorney general's office reviews zoning bylaws before they're passed, so Hubbardston must have, I mean Hubbardston, Rutland, must have, must have passed muster with that criteria?
Yeah.
I would think, before they put it onto their.
Well, I'm doing a project in Holden and I met with the superintendent of schools for Wachusett and Rutland, each house in Rutland is generating an average of two to two and a half students per house and they don't have any room in their schools.
Well, I believe during, I don't know if it was this, this board or one of the other boards I'm on that came up, I think it was planning board, where Rutland changed their zoning and they basically rid all of it and they just started building everywhere over there.
And they have sewer and water.
Yes.
And they have sandy ground soils too. So yeah, they have a lot of, they have things that we don't have.
Right, but they just, we have a cap on what we can do here, but over at Rutland, they just did away with all of it and.
But there's also been some complaints about the fact that Rutland's growth has been fairly uncontrolled as of recently and I think individuals within Rutland themselves have indicated that there's been some, some concerns, at least that's anecdotal. I don't think it's an official, something's come down officially. I think part of, you know, what, what the master plan that we have here in plant, in town needs to consider this here, what is it that the town really wants, what does the town look for? What therefore is the appropriate development given the, the restrictions that are imposed on us by the conditions that we have here, be that land, be it infrastructure, be it et cetera, water, et cetera. So I think we need to be very realistic about that. I do understand that our schools here are at this point in time.
Under capacity.
Under capacity, yes.
Correct, correct.
So there's some concerns about that in itself. So I think figuring out the right type of development so that we also can attract individuals who are going to be repopulating the schools to some extent, that's something we need to look at.
Yeah, I also think with something they should go to town grow too, do the people in Hubbardston.
Not disagreeing.